I promise not to be late.
Oh, no, no, take your time.
Yeah. So I have this great script, just so everyone knows. It's gonna sound really formal. All right, good morning, everyone.
So do you think?
Jason Lee, Chair of the Board of Trustees. Welcome, everyone, to our Board of Trustees meeting. It is November 16th, 2018, 9:06 a.m. I have a couple, I am, I am. I'm gonna tighten that up a little bit. Couple advisories. As a reminder, please be aware that we are webcasting our meeting. In order to assure the audio and closed captioning are clear and accurate, when you are ready to speak, remember to turn on your microphone, speak into the microphone, and identify yourself. Also, please restate any question before answering, and remember to turn off the microphone when you're done. So I'll, I'll help facilitate that as well. And I'll put that on, it's my, my duty to, to attempt to restate a question. If you're gonna leave the meeting, so this is new, just announce that you are and whether you're gonna be returning. Apparently, if you aren't coming back, we have to figure out whether we're still gonna have a quorum for, for voting. So, keep that in mind. You don't have to announce why you're leaving, but whether you're just gonna come back. This is, this is... Okay, no, but, you know, it's quorum, it's quorum. Yeah. Okay, well, we'll see how it goes. I think we're just sort of taking this on now. And I think it will be an organic process that will improve continually as we, as we get used to this. We should win tunneling. That could be the freebie that we get. All right, so, if I could have the roll call, please. Thank you. We are gonna go into closed session now. I anticipate being in closed session until about 10 a.m., and this will be closed pursuant to a number of government code sections, 11126, 26.2, 26E1 among them. So, we're gonna go and close right now. Thank you. Hello, everyone, we're back in open session after about an hour enclosed. It's 10:06. Jason Lee, Chair of the Board of Trustees. I'd like to start with the...
It's on.
It's on. Can I start with the roll call? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to start open session with a call for public comment. If there's anyone out in the audience that would like to provide public comment, please come forward. I see one hand raised up. Two?
Two.
Two? All right, oh, okay, there's a number.
Three.
Sarah, could you get their names and... Hello, welcome. If you could introduce yourself, and so that others who are watching can, can identify you, that'd be great.
Okay, now it is. Thank you. Good morning, my name's Lita Abella. I'm the new Senior Program Analyst from the Lawyer Assistance Program. I'm a union executive board member and the former union president for the Los Angeles Bargain Unit employees. I'm here today on behalf of the LAP staff and the union to ask that the Board of Trustees keep LAP as is, which was option number one, to keep with the mission of protecting the public. One of the reasons is Patrick Krill's recommendations. He's the expert in the field, and he recommended that we stay with LAP as is. Thousands of dollars were spent on his report and his recommendations. There's a lot of benefit of keeping LAP. It's gonna avoid the time, effort, and cost to alter LAP or, alter LAP structure or get rid of LAP. Several of Krill's recommendations have already been implemented. For example, I'm the new outreach person who's been hired, and I was just hired in June. So, between September 11th to present, I've already presented to over 1,000 attorneys and law students. And we've received a lot of positive feedback from law school deans, law students, participants, and attorneys. Law students are now calling in, asking about the Lawyer Assistance Program. 2018 is the first year that LAP has been open to law students. And between September 11th to today, 68 people have called LAP and 64 became participants. Also, during that same time period, we've had a higher number of non-discipline participants in 2018 than we had in 2017. There's been a downward trend in the number of participants, but outreach, but the outreach program has not been existence long enough to allow the number to increase. We also have outreach constraints on being able to use social media, blogs, and other forms of communication, which would also enhance getting participants into LAP. Additionally, LAP was compared to five other LAP programs in the United States, but we're not comparing apples to apples. For example, Texas, all phone calls, including repeat calls, are considered client files open. Whereas we, in California, we only count active participants as client files open. So, the stats are very different in the way things are, the way the statistics are, are created. Additionally, the State Bar just leased a new office for the LAP staff and removed LAP from the building, from the State Bar building, which has received a lot of positive feedback. Why did the State Bar create, you know, sign a new lease, and then now they want to either, you know, alter the structure or get rid of the LAP program? Why did they create this new position, the outreach position, which I'm just running with full speed ahead and, and doing a great job, and, you know, our department's receiving a lot of positive comments about that? If LAP is terminated, the LAP staff would stay with the State Bar, which means that new staff would have to be hired and trained by the new entity. This would create a lack, a lack of experience and institutional knowledge. It would threaten the program continuity, reduce program efficiency and functionality until the new staff is up to speed. We already have a great working relationship with OCTC, State Bar Court, and the Committee of Bar Examiners. We already have the resources to continue our program, and we want to continue with the public policy mission and the valuable services to our licensees and future stakeholders, the law students. Now, my coworker Nicole from San Francisco, Roget, would like to say a few words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nicole Roget. I'm a licensed mental health therapist and a clinical rehabilitation coordinator for the Lawyer Assistance Program. We urge the board to reconsider Option 1 and to follow the recommendations from Patrick Krill's study of keeping the LAP within the bar. First, outsourcing the LAP is problematic because many of our interventions occur prior to formal State Bar discipline. The early relationships that we form and individual interventions that we have with our participants are what promotes rehabilitation. Second, participants' needs and their circumstances change while working with their individual clinical rehabilitation coordinator. For example, a participant will start the LAP in our support track, but for a myriad of reasons, such as new State Bar Court discipline charges, or that we're able to recognize that this person needs more structure than our support track can offer, they may transition into the monitored program. They may then transition back to support because the State Bar discipline charges don't come to light, or that participant stabilizes enough in our monitored program and is ready for a less structured support model. If the LAP is outsourced, we'll lose that continuity and the consistency with our participants. Mr. Krill also recommended the removal of the Evaluation Committee, which was a committee that evaluated the progress of our participants with the LAP. They also accepted or denied participants into the LAP, and they recommended changes to the individual monitored or support plans. Mr. Krill believed that this committee was, quote, "cumbersome, opaque, and inefficient," end quote, and he raised concerns regarding the participants' confidentiality. As a result of this, the LAP restructured and instituted the clinical review team that replaced the Evaluation Committee. This clinical review team is made up of LAP clinical staff that have direct experience with the participants and have specific knowledge of the mental health and substance use issues that plague the attorney population. Our, our clinical review team has been met with overwhelmingly positive reviews from participants and our group facilitators. In just eight months, we have effectively taken what was once an outsourced task, made the process completely internal, and continue to receive positive feedback from the increased level of care, the increased transparency, increased flexibility for our participants, and the increased confidentiality that our participants feel in dealing with only LAP staff. Despite only having a matter of months to implement these recommendations by Mr. Krill before the board decided to scrape Option 1, we've been met with unequivocal growth within the LAP. With mental health and, in particular, substance use issues at an all-time high, not just within the country, but within the attorney population specifically, we are asking Option 1 be reconsidered so we can continue to promote the pub, to continue to protect the public and fulfill the mission of the State Bar. So, I also have a letter from a group facilitator in our San Francisco, that leads our San Francisco groups. If it would be helpful, I'm happy to pass that out to you. And then my colleague Jennifer Cantori, who I believe is on the phone, has a few words to say as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Jennifer on the phone right now?
...enter your conference code, followed by the pound or... Thank you. If you are the leader... Sorry, you may have entered an invalid conference code or dialed an incorrect number, 3326. Please verify and try again. To start or join your conference, press 1. You will now be placed into conference. After joining the call, to record the conference for those who may miss this call or for future playback, press star 2.
Hello? Hello? Jennifer, are you there? Anyone on the line? Hello?
Hello? Hello?
So you are now, I...
Are we in the conference?
Yeah, you are the, you are the public comment portion of open session for the trustees. You are anticipating Jennifer Cantori. And, okay, Jennifer, you on the line?
Yes, I am on the line. I would thank you for, for letting me speak. I shortly would just like to say that other experts do not support outsourcing or altering LAP structure. No one asked the LAP staff or of their opinion or on outsourcing or altering the LAP or their structure.
Are you able to hear us now?
Uh, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. So, thank you for giving me the time to speak. I would like to say that other experts do not support outsourcing or altering LAP structure. No one asked the LAP staff of their opinion on outsourcing or altering the LAP. The Oversight Committee, participants, group facilitators, and State Bar Court staff do not support outsourcing or altering LAP's current structure. Thank you, and now I will pass this on to Shelley Frazier, one of our clinical rehabilitation coordinators.
Hi, good morning. I'm sure you had an opportunity to read Stuart Shea's letter, and I agree with all of his points completely. I wanted to add two more points, and I'll keep it short, out of respect for your time. I have just, you know, a little bit about my background. I do have 25 years of professional experience in the field as a licensed social worker, and my background's in mental health, substance use, and what we see really often here at, at the LAP, which is a kind of co-occurring situations where someone has a problem with both. So, one, the first point I would make is, I've noticed this incredible increase in law student call since Lita has begun visiting schools. And phone calls usually start with a sentence sort of like, you know, "I think I may have a problem with anxiety or depression or drinking," but very often these people say they don't have any legal repercussions yet from it. So, what I have observed is that the State Bar and LAP have a chance to be proactive rather than reactive. We're kind of investing in these folks before it becomes, you know, a really serious issue. And I would love for that to be able to continue. My second point would be, when I went to, I had the opportunity to go to the Co-LAP Conference in Charleston, and I met several people there, and these are, you know, a collection of all the experts with all the LAP programs in the country. And I met several people who really sang Patrick Krill's praises and talked about what an expert he is. So that was really eye-opening to me and interesting to me. And so, from that, I really want to kind of emphasize that we don't, we don't know how this'll go. So far, we feel like it's going great, but if we, if there's any way we can reconsider Option 1 and just delay a decision, that just seems the most rational thing to do based on his recommendations. And maybe we will discover that there would be a benefit to having attorneys receive help outside or part of their help outside, but to go against his, Mr. Krill's recommendations and not give us a chance to try their program with the changes we've been, that we've made, the benefit of the outreach coordinator, the new location, the more streamlined internal processes clinically we've implemented, just seems hasty to me. And, and that's all I have, and thank you for listening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would now like to introduce Dr. June Roos. She has a comment. She's one of our group facilitators.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Dr. June Roos, and I appreciate the opportunity to be heard. I've been a personal psychologist for a number of years and have worked with a variety of different people. When I am with my LAP group, one of the things I noticed particularly idiotic products to attorneys is they don't connect with other attorneys very often. And in the support group, what I have experienced and witnessed is these gentlemen and women really reaching out and understanding one another, and oftentimes, particularly with the folks that come through the alternative temporary program, one of the things they say is that the LAP group is the most beneficial thing that they experience with all of their requirements that they are, that they are doing to maintain their license. And as a result of all of that, there are these groups of people who end up being friends inside and outside of the LAP support group and have reached out to each other over the course of years, even after they complete their requirements. And I know this because I have some contacts with the attorneys that I have treated through LAP, and they oftentimes thank me for making the experience one in which they can enter their shed inside and have a better understanding of how to generalize that into their lawyer work. I think that by giving this benefit up, it would be a great disservice, particularly as the State Bar wants to protect the public. This is one way that it really does protect the attorney. And that's all I have to say.
That concludes the participants and people for the Lawyer Assistance Program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hang on one second. So I think the next group subject matter is gonna relate to the law schools. I don't know if this is part of a coordinated effort or not, but I have Mitch, Elizabeth, and Greg. So Mitch, you're at the top of the list if you wanna, if you wanna proceed.
Yeah, flip that order if you don't mind.
Okay.
Hello, are you still accepting public comment?
Uh, we are. Oh, is this, is this LAP?
Uh, this is James Hiding. Can I speak now?
Are you speaking concerning LAP?
I, I'm calling to speak on behalf of the Lawyer Assistance Program to support the LA proposals and the Option 1 consideration. I was the, thank you. I was the president of the other bar long ago, and then the, I was a member of the Board of Governors of the State Bar of California, and then the State Bar President in 2005, '06. I have intimate knowledge of the preparation and implementation of the Lawyer Diversion and Assistance Program, which occurred back in the early 2000s, and have been the commissioner, a commissioner on the Commission on Lawyer Assistance Programs, governing nine states some time ago, three years in a row, appointed by three different ABA presidents, and have been involved, of course, with recovery issues and have actually testified as an expert witness in the State Bar Court at one time. And there are a few issues that I wanted to address, but really, the end result is to support the Option 1 proposal that they, the LAP remain with the State Bar for this, at least a one-year period, to give them a chance. I think that the history of the LAP is such, and you'll probably agree, that they really haven't had a free hand and a good, strong direction over several years until they were tasked with the implementation of a new evaluation and planning over the last couple of years, which they took very seriously. which they took very seriously and put into place. And we have the reports from Patrick Krill, as well as the ABA and multiple states envisioning the Attorney Wellness Programs throughout the country. So there's a, quite a bit of focus and, and heft that goes with the idea of allowing the LAP to be as successful as it can be over the next year and then thereafter. Uh, in regard to that, in one instance, I, I wanted to point out that I did apply to be on the LA Oversight Committee, uh, for full disclosure, back in November of two thousand seventeen to fill the slot of a, a person who had, uh, retired and resigned from the LAP. Uh, I got the letters of recommendation and the support and still have not been the recipient of the, of word on the application. I do believe that that really, uh, handcuffs or limits the ability of the LAP to move forward when you don't fill the slots that are, uh, statutorily mandated or at least, uh, suggested, uh, strongly in the statute. And so I would, I would encourage you to do that as well, but my main reason for calling in is to, uh, fully support the idea that the LAP should be given a free hand to see what they can do over this next year. I understand the Board of Trustees' concerns about it and your reservations, but I think this is a, a partnership that can really work if you let the experts, uh, take over and be experts, and, and you let the Oversight Committee manage the program with the Board of Trustees reviewing their recommendations and, uh, thought processes and plans, and then hopefully if the, uh, recommendations are reasonable, you would approve them and, and give them the ability to move forward. So thank you very much for listening to us, I, I am very hopeful that you will take a course that will support the LAP.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chair, I apologize for interrupting, I'll just step down very briefly, this is Ruben Duran.
Thanks, Ruben. You're coming back?
I am coming, okay. I am.
All right, Mitch, thanks for your, uh, Mitch, thanks for your patience, um, go ahead.
All right, good morning, everyone. My name is Greg Brandis, I'm the Dean of St. Francis School of Law, for those of you who don't know me. Uh, and, uh, before I begin, let me say, uh, this is all good news today. So, uh, the, uh, the smoke in San Francisco might take years off your life today, but I am not, nor are my colleagues. Particular issue at this point. Uh, thanks for your time, thanks for your confidence in, uh, voting again, uh, yesterday to, uh, put the, um, uh, the Advisory Committee on California Accredited Law School Rules, continue those appointments while we sort out the remaining issues about how that law school engagement stuff is going to work. Uh, and I'm here as your chair of that committee for the last year. Uh, and I guess I'm still the chair until something else happens, until, uh, some decision is made about, uh, the revisions. But that's what I'm here to talk about. As you know, there's been a several-month process of considering how the bar interacts with the non-ABA law schools in California, with the ABA law schools in California. Uh, that process, of course, included, uh, several different proposals for how this should look going forward over a period of time, and I'm here today to talk about the latest proposal. And what you have, uh, before you, this was distributed in email, uh, I understand, on Monday, so everybody probably already had it. Just wanted to make sure that everyone had it, and let me explain what it is. Uh, there is a memo from twenty-three law schools responding to the sta, the most recent staff proposal on how to organize several issues related to the law schools. You then have two function and procedures documents that relate to the two remaining subentities that were proposed by the staff. And those function and procedures documents draw on the documents that presently exist for those bodies and make every effort to adapt them to this new world as proposed by the staff. They fill in a certain amount of the detail, which I must say was kind of necessary to get all the law schools to understand this area and, uh, really appreciate what was going to happen. And, uh, so that, those documents help, we hope, move that conversation forward to a spot where everybody can be agreed on how this should work going forward. Um, and the law schools did, you know, the work to try to understand how it should look and how it should work in a new era with, uh, adopting the staff proposal. What I really want to talk about, though, is primarily the process of getting to this spot. And, um, so we understand that these proposals will come before you in January for an action and decision. Uh, and we wanted, the law schools wanted to respond promptly to the proposal that was provided by the staff, uh, which was provided in sometime in, in November. So we're providing this to you as public comment today so that you have some time to consider it. It's enough to read, uh, and enough to think about, and, uh, rather than getting it shortly before the next meeting when you have to make a decision, we wanted to come before you and support it. Uh, because we're here to say that the law schools are in support of the staff proposal in virtually every respect, my colleagues will go into a little bit more detail about what that means. But we're pleased to say that after a period of, uh, kind of unfortunate conflict, uh, we think we've reached a spot where we're all sort of in agreement. Uh, and hopefully we can join arms and go forward and get this done and be happy and go on to more productive things and uses of our time. So very briefly, it includes the, uh, immediate implementation of the distance learning rules, which, as I've spoken to this board before, have been six years in process, have been voted unanimously by this board twice, have been voted unanimously by the Committee of Bar Examiners three times, uh, have been awaiting this process to come to a conclusion, uh, for almost a year, actually, over a year, uh, at this point. And so we're at this stage all agreed that those should be immediately implemented. There are also very important steps in moving forward, the quality of regulation of law schools in California, because they take some steps toward a world that's, uh, much more outcomes-oriented and gives us a chance to really expand the capabilities of these schools, some of whom are locked into an eighteenth-century educational model at the moment because of the nature of the regulation that presently exists. And these rules move that forward into a much more modern era that can actually make the much better schools. Uh, it also includes the law schools' acceptance and agreement to the staff proposal in terms of law school engagement, in terms of the way this, that the staff and the bar will accredit law schools going forward. That, of course, I should say, took a fair amount of work, uh, on our side to kind of educate our, our, uh, law schools about it. And so I appreciate you taking a few moments for me to lay that out for you, uh, those processes, but it was not inconsiderable work to get twenty-three law schools lined up in support of the proposal provided by your staff. And that's what we come today to say. Uh, the acrimony is in the past as far as we are concerned, and we'd like to see this move forward expeditiously in a form that the law schools are comfortable with and the staff is comfortable with, uh, from this point forward. So, uh, I appreciate your time, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues who would say a few words about each part of it, the engagement part and the accreditation part. And I guess, uh, my last duty is, in case anyone didn't get one, I assume everyone got one? Put some out all over the room? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, if you could state your name.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, for those of you that I haven't had the pleasure of meeting, my name is Elizabeth Zier. I'm the Dean of Academics at Monterey College of Law. Sorry. It is, well, the light's on. Should we try again?
Okay, go ahead.
Little bit better?
Yes.
Wonderful. My name's Elizabeth, I am the Dean of Academics at Monterey College of Law. I'm here to speak to you very briefly about the engagement between the law schools and the State Bar, and I'm making a point to speak to you today because I want to thank everybody. I want to thank the board, and I want to thank the staff, particularly Leah and Donna, for all of the time and effort that they've put into collaborating with the law schools and making this a productive process. I know it's been a long time coming, it's been hard. But I had the pleasure of attending both the LA and San Francisco meetings, uh, between the law schools and the staff, and the result of that meeting is an engagement model that I feel very, uh, positive about moving forward. I know you'll have an opportunity to review it a little bit as you go forward, but just in sum, the idea is that the Law School Council will now be, uh, ABA Model Advisory Group, and the CS Bars Group will be an advisory group that incorporates the registered schools and the Cal's schools. So those two bodies would speak to the needs of those particular entities. The new model would also have these groups moved to the magic number of seven, uh, based on the advice from outside sources, and we would go through and perhaps, uh, reduce the number of CBE members on this particular, uh, law school committee and the C-Bars committee. Uh, the working groups could be added in if necessary, so an ad hoc, uh, limited-term working group can be called if necessary to add their input to any given issue. And then this also allows the Law School Assembly to be a little bit more effective and to come together when needed. And then the staff has graciously offered to submit a, an outreach newsletter to law schools in general to speak to important matters that everyone who doesn't necessarily have the time or resources to come to the meetings can then have the benefit of that knowledge. So as someone who's fairly new to this process, this is actually my first time speaking to the board, uh, I want to just say how enthusiastic I am about being a part of this process and having the ability, moving forward to work with everybody, uh, to make law school education the best it can be. If I may indulge you a moment, I want to lend my support also to LAP. Good portion of my job is counseling students, and so I now have the ability to refer them out to LAP, and this sense of, it's almost a sense of security that the students seem to feel when they know that the State Bar has a process for them to go into if they need to. They feel already included within the profession, they already feel as if it's something that they can identify with. And it's become, in the limited time, it's become a good resource. I've already referred out to it in what I would consider a successful set of circumstances. So if there's anything that I can do to help, uh, answer questions about not only engagement, but also how the students are interacting and reacting to LAP, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and members of the board, my name is Mitch Winnick. Uh, I'm in my thirteenth year of one of the Cal accredited law schools, Monterey College of Law. Uh, as many of you know, I also served as former Chair of the Rules Advisory Committee and former Chair of the Law School Council. So I've had a role in many of these things we're discussing today in that I, I support a wholeheartedly Elizabeth summary of our recommendations of how to move forward with the staff's recommendation. The one thing I'm gonna briefly call your attention to, and it would be on page three of the executive summary that we handed out, it was this challenging idea that, that really the staff brought to the schools that said, "Should we recognize other accreditors, such as the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, other national, regional, or state-recognized accreditors?" And there was a concern that perhaps there was a, a duplication of effort, that the State Bar was spending time, resources, and money to, uh, accredit schools that had already been through a parallel rigorous accreditation process. And that was a very novel idea, I must say, for those of us who've been part of the seventy-year history of the State Bar accrediting law schools. And as, as Greg made reference to, that, that was a disruptive enough idea that we had our moments of consternation and concern about it, but what you have in front of you is, is a compromise proposal that we think came out of that recommendation, and we're very pleased to support. Uh, the idea is to essentially add a category of accreditation within the State Bar's rules. Currently, there are ABA-accredited law schools that are deemed accredited by statute, and that's the mechanism by which those graduates are, meet the criteria to sit for the California Bar Exam. That we suggest no change to. You don't regulate the ABA law schools, that process seems to work. Uh, the engagement recommendation, we think, may improve the relationship between the bar and the ABA law schools. So we think that, we can set that aside. As to the non-ABA law schools, we're recommending that there essentially be two categories. We add, essentially from the staff's recommendation, this concept of deemed accredited, similar to what's used for the ABA law schools, but extend that to schools accredited by the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, similar national, regional, and state accreditors, with the additional expectation that those schools will still be held accountable as accredited law schools to the State Bar for a specific set of standards that we will still work out. Clearly, minimum cumulative bar pass rate would be one, and other essential standards that we'll go back through CS Bars and we will bring back to you. So we think that would then take the, that category of schools, which essentially will end up being, we think in time, maybe half of the current accredited and registered law schools, so not an insubstantial change in the resources required to be allocated by the board and the Committee of Bar Examiners. The heavy lift would be done by the other creditor, they would then certify through our organization, and I mean that collectively with us, these other minimum standards to make sure they meet the state rules. And then the third category would again remain essentially unchanged, which would be schools like ours, who are not ABA-accredited or WASC-accredited, but look to this body for our accreditation. So it would, that group would still require the rigorous review and scrutiny that this body has, has regulated for, as I said, almost seven decades. So, page three summarizes that. We believe it brings a new element in, it doesn't create, uh, as our concern was, and I know you expressed concern, doesn't create a gap of public protection, we don't have a gap of oversight, but we eliminate what we do see now was perceived as an overlap of resources that just didn't need to be expended by this body, so we can accomplish both with this recommendation. So, that, that, the final item is one that will require additional work, and we, again, would just adopt the staff's recommendation, that this concept of a mandatory pathway to accreditation for all law schools in California be adopted, that clearly will require some legislative input as well. Uh, there's a proposal that this board has approved in the past. We encourage you to continue to move forward of implementation on that. It's going to take some work over time, that will not happen overnight. You will select which legislative session you choose to bring those changes, uh, to the rules, regulations, and statutes on that, but we would endorse the staff recommendation on that as well. Uh, similar to my colleague Elizabeth, if I could just indulge in a brief moment, prior to coming to California, I spent ten years involved and eventually as the Executive Director of the Texas Center for Legal Ethics and Professionalism. We worked hand in hand with the Texas Lawyers Assistance Program. So I had front-row seats of seeing the effectiveness and the truly transformative, uh, opportunities that a bar-sponsored LAP program could have. And not only from the personal stories I know of lawyers and law students that benefited from that, and I, I think it's fair to say, would not have gone through that program except for the fact that it was a bar, a professional bar-sponsored program that had colleagues, judges, and lawyers involved that were there to help them. It would not have worked. And to circle back around to where I started, from the concept of public protection, and we saw yesterday, what, nine million dollars being paid out? And we saw yesterday, what, $9 million being paid out from the Client Security Fund for misdeeds by lawyers. I'm sure you get stats that say what percentage of those come from impaired lawyers that cause those losses. I mean, this would seem to be a relatively small investment in preventive when you look to the impact that that could have in reducing that number, perhaps, in the future, when we get, when we intervene as students, young lawyers, in that process as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, well, thank you very much for the remarks relating to LAP as well as the law school accreditation process. I and all of us do appreciate receiving input from you all. So thank you. So we'll move on to the next component of the agenda, which is the minutes. Any objection to waiving reading of the minutes? Any objection to adopting the minutes as is? Does that procedure apply for minutes? Do we, okay. All right, so can we do a motion then? Roll call, please. Okay. Just for you, Brandon. Let's do the roll call.
This is the first one. This is May. Yes.
And that was Mendoza, Lozada, and Selleck. Sonia, did you want to abstain option?
Can I have a second? Sonia? Hi.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the Chair Report. So I wanted to talk about two things. The first is what I think is a critical discussion that we'll be having today relating to our 2019 budget and our five-year forecast. We're putting both of those together because the 2019 budget is necessarily going to inform the five-year forecast. And why that's important is that that is going to be the foundation to make the case for our fee increase. Leah and John are going to take us through the details of what's behind the numbers. But I really urge you to take looks at what we're spending on the information technology, the upkeep of our building, which is truly basic maintenance to avoid our elevators from stalling midfloor or pieces of our building falling out into the street. As well as, what you'll see a large component of is the OCTC funding, which is a needed component if we wanted to address what has been a constant drumbeat in terms of our backlog and our other metrics relating to how quickly we can dispose of our cases. There's two paths that we can take. The first one is to look hard, but also be visionary in the way we think and believe the agency should operate to ensure that we continue our mission of public protection. That really is only going to happen if we fund our agency. And by virtue of that funding, or our belief in what that funding should be, that's really the only way the legislature is going to know what we want. The other path is to take a much more conservative path, which is to take a hard look and balance our budget with the intended or anticipated revenue that's going to come in the next year or two, which is going to mean a substantial curtailment in many of our programs, including resources for OCTC. And I don't need to remind all of you that the lack of resources in OCTC is going to mean the lack of resources to address our caseload. The other, I guess, less important, but for our own personal time, is going to be a, some governance changes. And so at EXCOM, we talked about some governance changes relating to RAD, and we had decided to delay that for further consideration by the RAD co-chairs. And they and I will be working together to sort of figure out what the best way to distribute resources on that committee, as well as the discipline issues that come before the board. The other component that came with the changes in RAD are the changes in the rest of the committees, which is essentially a reduction in committee sizes. And you'll see in the agenda, my proposal's relating to removing trustees to each committee, to get us to committees that efficiently use our resources and also abide by the general concepts of what we adopted in Appendix I, which is the efficiencies associated with this magical number of seven. Other things that I've adopted are the elimination of all the scheduled teleconferences. And what will result is that if there is an emergency issue that requires the board attention, that will go to EXCOM. We are reducing the number of days in January to, from three to two days. That's for our strategic session. The, a emphasis on the committee chairs to review their agendas and approve that prior to posting. And I'll call the items that go into consent. And it's an issue that Sean has spotted a number of times, which is things that should be put on for general business discussion and pulled from consent. So just keep in mind that any issues that deserve either the committee's full discussion or the board's full discussion be pulled from consent. Another change is a encouragement on my part that audit and finance and planning, that the chairs have the discretion to hold meetings telephonically outside of the live meetings that we have. And that the remaining RAD in programs are done on the first day of our meetings, which should allow, if my anticipation of the scheduling works, that folks can fly in on the morning and not the night before, which I think will save some time for everyone. I'm also recommending that we reduce the number of informational presentations to streamline our process by keeping what I think we all consider the material items that have been in front of the board for the last year, still with the staff reporting to us regularly. And those include, but are not limited to, fingerprinting, the case management system, OCTC performance metrics, and the Appendix I process. So that concludes my Chair Report. I do need a motion on the committee reductions. Brandon, can I have a second? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on that. The attachment to what's currently posted has a reduction in RAD. So we'd have to exclude that from this somehow. The other concern I want to raise, sorry to spring this on you, Mark, but Mark Broughton is our liaison to the Commission on Access Issues, but he's being taken off of programs. And I think whoever we have as liaison in that role should remain on programs to report to the committee anything they've learned through their liaison experience. So I don't think, either you need to leave, or you should leave Mark on programs, or eliminate him as a liaison to those. So there, it's not as bad. Give him a choice.
Those are big sigh on Mark Broughton's part. So what do you think, Mark?
I'm good either way. I've been a liaison to. Oh, sorry. Whichever is the pleasure of the Chair. Either way, I've been on Programs Committee for the last couple of years, been liaison, I believe, to the Access Commission for one or two years. So I'm familiar with that either way. I would say that it does appear as if both Debbie and I are liaisons, at least to that. I'm a little unclear as to why we need two liaisons for each of those committees. But again, I'll defer to whichever way you wish to proceed on that.
Jason, Brandon Stalling, certainly if any report needs to be given, then I think that can be either a-agendized or, you know, if Mark is here for the board meetings, then we can ask for such a report to be presented.
I'm not sure if Bagley Keane allows that, if it's a board member who's not on the committee. I'd have to defer to General Counsel.
He can give a public comment.
I'm not sure that that's clear, that that can happen. I've received advice in the past, not, I don't remember when it was from Vanessa, that a board member who's not on the committee at the day cannot provide public comment. You can sit, you can observe. So that wouldn't be possible. So yeah, that's correct, okay.
All right, so the, would there be anything preventing Mark from reporting to programs based on his liaison duties? So if I, if I agendize.
Just transition report? No.
No, so if I, on programs, like, so Brandon wants a report from the liaisons, and Mark continues to be a liaison on programs, can Mark provide that report as part of the program's agenda?
But he's not on the committee.
Correct.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's, well.
I think it's cleaner if you put me on the committee, just to be.
Leave him on? Yeah, I don't have an objection. So I can tell you that I had this very complicated hand tallying of all the trustees' responsibilities. And I marked, you know, every time you were assigned to something. So I tried to make everyone's responsibilities about even. So that's how we got to some of these eliminations. But if, Mark, you don't mind having a hand tally, an additional responsibility, that would put you, so, it would put you equivalent, then I'm fine with that. So, okay, so we got two things that are happening. One, I did announce in my Chair Report that we're sort of carving out the RAD reduction from that document. So nothing relating to RAD is going to apply.
The resolution refers to the attachment, the attachments.
Got it.
Except as applies to.
It'll be as amended. Okay.
And then we will leave Mark on.
I'll take those as a friendly amendment.
Okay, great. And who has a second? Renee?
Yes.
Right. No, thank you for pointing that out, Joanna. I can substitute roll call. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any objection? All right. Thank you. So we will move on to the Executive Director Report.
Okay. So I think what I'm hoping we can spend a couple of minutes on this morning. Because I believe that there could be some concern that kind of streamlining our processes might indicate in some way that there's reduced oversight by the board. And certainly I know that is not the intention, and I know that's not the reality. And I want to talk a little bit about ways in which we can at least publicly demonstrate that oversight. Certainly, we know what goes on in our weekly calls and the various meetings that we do have on an ongoing basis. But I do think public accountability is important as well. And so to that end, I'm hoping to turn your attention to the dashboards. You have posted to your agenda two different sets of dashboards. The first one is the relatively new dashboard on the strategic plan. And this is a busy document because our strategic plan is quite ambitious. But it is an attempt to give a visual depiction of the entirety of the five-year strategic plan and how we are doing with respect to making progress on each one of the delineated objectives. And of course, this is supported by a smart sheet tool that you all have access to that goes into a tremendous amount of detail on each one of these items. So that's the newest dashboard. If you go into the second attachment, I've uploaded here, the older dashboard. So the first page is the strategic plan document. And then if you go to pages two through five, you will see dashboards with, giving you an overview of our progress on various capital and IT projects, our finances, communications, and HR vacancy rates, et cetera. So I wanted to talk to the board a little bit about how useful you find any of these documents. And if you can recommend any improvements to them, changes, elimination, recommendation of a different approach. The intent behind these, of course, is to give you a quick snapshot overview of how we are doing in key areas. So with that in mind, I'll just turn it over to all of you to solicit your feedback.
Leah, I think if we presented this at the Finance and Planning Committee meetings, and those items that have been delayed or aren't happening yet would be the ones that we would be focusing on in that committee to make sure we're, that they're not being delayed or not started yet for reasons that something out of our control, that we should be addressing.
All of them, or do you, are you referring then to the major IT and capital projects and the financial dashboard?
Well, no, I'm talking about the strategic plan document.
Oh, the strategic plan document.
That has, those items that have the red, or I can't tell if that's beige or what have you, gold, would be what the Planning and Finance and Planning Committee would be kind of keeping an eye on to make sure things don't, aren't getting delayed for something that we can control.
Feedback? Okay.
Are these, are these documents posted for the public or just available to the board?
They're posted for the public.
I'm not sure, you know, it's a big issue. You could probably consolidate some of these, the last two pages. You know, I'm not sure, like, revenue, like, revenue, expenses, liquidity, those are, you know, pretty big deals. I'm a little less concerned with how many tweets we sent out, to be honest. You know, we get a report every week on sort of press and all that. So it's just the sort of high and low of detail here is a little bit mismatched. So if you wanted to consolidate that, and I think we generally want to know what kind of turnover we're having. But I don't know that, you know, years of service changes on a monthly basis that dramatically. So just, it's not harmful to have it there, but it just strikes me that there's a little bit of mismatch.
Right, so I think we're going to continue, oh, Josh.
Leah, I'm just trying to understand exactly.
Leah, I'm just trying to understand exactly the feedback you're looking for. I find the tool to be useful and the idea that we are recording and reporting on it. Are you looking for feedback on specifically the layout and the reporting product, or just on whether or not we're finding the tool useful?
When you talk about the tool, are you talking about these dashboards or smart sheet, or the dashboards?
Well, both, the dashboards, I mean, specifically, the dashboards.
Yeah, so one, it's a global question, do you find it useful at all? If we stop, if, you know, stop posting them going forward, would you care? So that's one. And then, sort of to Renee's points, just taking a look at them, do they still make sense? The entirety of the Communications Dashboard, really the impetus for that, for example, was a real concern, I think, on the part of the Board, going back now two years, about, you know, our perception that our communications function was fairly ineffective. A lot of work has been done since then, and so perhaps that's not such a relevant dashboard at all in its entirety. So I just think it's important to kind of revisit what we're doing and why we're doing it periodically. So any, any feedback in that whole continuum is welcome.
Well, from a, from a general overview, I think it's fantastic that we have this kind of transparency and that we're putting out information. I do, with Renee, I mean, I'll spend a little more time on it, and maybe people can give recommendations. I do find it to be maybe almost too detailed at times, and a little confusing on what exactly the objective and message is that we're sending. But I always find more information useful.
I think the only thing that I'm, I would like to see here is a timeline. You have all those, but...
Mr. Chair, just a brief note that I'm back in the room. Ruben Duran.
Are you referring, Sonia, specifically to the Strategic Plan Dashboard?
The red ones with the, for the red dice that they...
Okay, all right.
Any other comments? Do you have?
Yeah, which is, again, we're gonna talk a little bit more on the budget item, but particularly as we go into seeking a fee increase, I think those accountability questions and demonstrations of accountability are especially important. So I appreciate your time, and if you have any additional thoughts, just let me know.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go to the Consent Agenda, a couple of items. The, the change in RAD has been pulled from Consent in the sense that we're not considering that issue today in any form. There was amendments relating to the Consumer Alert Resolutions. That has now been reflected in the Consent Items with the resolutions. And if, broad strokes, this was some, tweaking to the language relating to some of the options that the Board, that RAD was considering. I think those are the only changes. So does anyone wish to pull anything from the Consent Agenda? All right. Unless there are any objections, I will deem the matters in Consent to have been adopted. Seeing no objections, we will move to the miscellaneous portion of our agenda. So this is item 701, Approval of Contract for Best Best in Krieger.
Mr. Chair, I get to leave the room again. I'm, I'm an employee at Best Best in Krieger, and so I need to disclose to the Board that I have a potential conflict of interest and the advice of the General Counsel's Office. I will be recusing myself and leaving the room.
Thanks, Ruben. You're coming back?
Unless I get a better rapper out there.
It's not hard.
I just have a question on the last roll call.
Question on the last roll call, did we add Ruben in? Was Ruben added in? Because he wasn't here for the previous roll call before he wasn't in the room.
But I think he entered the room when we were considering consent.
I just wanted to be sure that Sarah had added him on.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, thanks, Debbie. Brady, go ahead.
Hi there, everyone. Good morning again. This summer, prior to the September Board Meeting, and prior to the announcement that Ruben Duran would join the Board, OGC began discussions with Gary Shans, who is an of counsel at Best Bestin Krieger, regarding his serving as a Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator pursuant to Rule 2201 for the 2019 year. After that, after those discussions began, Mr. Duran joined the Board. He is a non-equity partner at Best Bestin Krieger, as he alluded to. Although Mr. Duran had no involvement in or any awareness of the potential engagement of Mr. Shans as the SDTCA, OGC analyzed whether a disqualifying conflict existed pursuant to Government Code 1090. As set forth in the item, OGC has determined that Mr. Duran's interest in the, in the contract with BBK qualifies as a remote interest under the statute and is therefore non-disqualifying. Of course, Mr. Duran will have to recuse himself from any consideration of the contract or anything to do with Mr. Shans' work for the Bar. The reason it qualifies for a remote interest is because of several facts that have been disclosed by Mr. Duran to the Bar and to the Board through the attachment to this item, which is his memorandum. And I'll go through them very quickly. Mr. Duran is an employee of Best Bestin Krieger. Best Bestin Krieger has more than 10 other employees, in fact, it has several hundred. Mr. Duran was an employee of Best Bestin Krieger more than three years prior to accepting his position here on the Bar, on the Board of Trustees, excuse me. And Mr. Duran owns less than 3% of the shares of stock of Best Bestin Krieger. In fact, he has no ownership interest at all. Mr. Duran is not an officer or director of Best Bestin Krieger, and he did not participate in formulating the bid of Best Bestin Krieger for Mr. Shans to serve as Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator. In fact, as I mentioned, he had no awareness or knowledge of this at all. So essentially, what we have here is a coincidence. After we began these negotiations, Mr. Duran joined the Bar. And because of these factors and facts, which basically establish that Mr. Duran doesn't have any, anything more than a remote interest, he won't, he won't, doesn't stand to gain any advantage from this contract. We advise that it does meet the definition of a remote interest. It is therefore non-disqualifying. And to satisfy the statute's requirements for a remote interest, we need to make sure that the Board is aware of all these facts, and then after that, ratifies and approves the contract. And that is what OGC requests through this item. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question. Will this have any impact on Ruben's ability to participate in the Rule 2201 discussions in closed session?
As, insofar as those discussions would involve an evaluation of how Mr. Shans is doing his work, yes. Insofar as it, it, it deals with the actual substantive questions of discipline, no.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll let Vanessa add to that if she'd like.
We don't... The Board doesn't pass on the substantive issues of discipline anyway, but if there are general policy guidance or things like that, they can. Brady's right, but not as to anything involving Mr. Shans.
Right. Any other questions?
I'll make the motion.
Brandon with the motion. Do I have a second? Joanna? Can I substitute role call?
No.
Oh, even prior to the discussion? Okay. Let's do the roll call. Okay, got it.
Broughton?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Duran? LeBron?
Yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Bertula?
Yes.
Selleck?
Yes.
Dahlin?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Can we call back Ruben?
He may have got an offer.
I see him. Guessing that, no better offer than in five minutes. Let's move on to item 702, which is a consideration of an exception to the CalPERS 180-day waiting period. Who's presenting that?
Lee. Mr. Lee.
Jay.
Oh. Here we are. Hello, welcome.
Good morning to the Board. Thank you for having me. Staff is requesting that the Board of Trustees approve a certifying resolution as set forth in the Agenda Item for Agenda Item Number 702. The statutes of applying to CalPERS require that individuals who have retired from the State, retired from a contracting entity with CalPERS not be re-employed as a retired annuitant within 180 days after their retirement date. With respect to a former investigator too, who recently retired from the State Bar, Sheila Campbell, staff is requesting that the Board of Trustees issue a certifying resolution to CalPERS indicating that Ms. Campbell has unique skills and that there is a urgent need to hire her as a retired annuitant within this 180-day period after her retirement date. The unique skills that she has is her experience as an investigator too, particularly with respect to the, to handling and resolving pending cases that OCTC currently has in its backlog. And, and two, the unique, or the urgency is the need to resolve these cases on a, on a more, you know, to have more short-term resources to resolve some of these issues that OCTC is facing with regards to resolving these cases. The certifying resolution was provided to the Board as Attachment A to Agenda Item 702, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have with respect to the certifying resolution.
Thanks, Jay. Any questions? Can I have a motion?
Second.
Debbie, Brandon? Any objections substituting the, oh, all right. I gotta get these rules down. All right.
Broughton?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
LeBron?
Yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Bertula?
Yes.
Selleck?
Yes.
Dahlin?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm actually also here on Agenda Item 703, which I believe is next on the Board's agenda.
Got it. And I see Tony. All right, welcome.
Similar to Agenda Item 702, staff is requesting that the Board of Trustees also issue a certifying resolution with respect to a recent retired judge, Judge Patrice McElroy, from the State Bar Court. In addition to that, State Bar Court is also requesting that the Board of Trustees exercise its authority and discretion and appoint Judge McElroy as a pro tem judge so that even after her retirement, or subsequent to her October 31 retirement date, that she may be able to perform duties with the State Bar Court as a retired annuitant. And similarly to that, because it's within 180 days of her retirement date, we would also need the Board to pass a certifying resolution, which we'll submit to CalPERS indicating that, that there, that Ms., pardon me, that Judge McElroy has unique skills and that there's also an urgency in to hire her as a retired annuitant within the 180-day period.
And the urgency is, we are short to hearing judges because of the appointment process. One of our judges was elected to Superior Court. One of our other judges was appointed to one of the vacancies. We have two vacancies that are not going to be filled for, we figure, probably at least another five months. And that leaves us with only three out of five hearing judges. Currently, my Assistant Chief Court Counsel is doing ENEs, Early Neutral Evaluation Conferences and settlement conferences, pretty much full-time, and she can't keep up with them, and we can't use the other three judges to do that because, one, it disqualifies them from hearing the case itself if it doesn't settle, and, two, we need them in court. So we can't wait 180 days for Judge McElroy to come back and help us. We need her help right now with ENEs and VSEs. We don't, right now envision her actually doing trials. We just need her to help cover this, this next couple of months until we get our new judges on board. And she has graciously agreed to come back and do it a couple of days a week, which is surprising.
Any questions?
I'll move.
Second.
Debbie and Brandon?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, Debbie and with the motion, and Brandon with the second.
First, me on the second.
Any objections substituting the roll call? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's take a, a short break, five minutes. Thank you.
Don't you think every time somebody comes, I'm like, you see, I should tell them to sit up? I'll go up there and see how many respond to it. What if they see this level of noise or something?
We're gonna opera.
We believe.
I don't know where I am.
This was this morning at the hotel. This is, here's downtown.
Right, you can't see it.
In theory, it's downtown. There would be downtown. Yeah, it's always, we're up in the middle, center of town. God, never seen.
Isn't it? I thought, you wonder all those old... I can't say that word. All those movies always look...
Look like that. They all look like that. But it's with Life on Mars, right? The sun's just little bitty tiny.
Robout has more than you said.
Anyway, yeah, it's... There is no hiding, there's hazards. About 300 point scale.
One of our staff members brought in masks for everyone.
You know, trick of life, I wouldn't have...
Got some over the weekend. And then, you know, everyone should be...
Here's, it has to be a specific type.
Well, there's... And it has to like fit with... I mean, the little tiny things are gonna get in, probably.
But they're effective last week for the rest. Anyway, yeah, crazy stuff.
But that's what you're doing. The alternative, right? What are we supposed to? Yeah, right. Yeah, that would be... So... Can you hear it all?
Oh, yeah, no, but I, I mean, I'm probably five hours.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be right back, thank you. Okay, I'll be, I'll be right back. Thank you. Why? What are your problems? Oh, my.
Take a look up to it.
How's it going? Are you?
Good, thanks.
It's for the poor people. Everyone. No, we don't. It's only one other thing.
Yeah, so what I wanted to say in those discussions is despite how awfully we've treated them. Despite the fact that we yelled at them and called them names and hated their motives over and over and over again, and our colleagues. It's horrible. Do you want to open up the, uh, the call line again for the next slide item?
So, uh, so, yes, I assumed that the call line was actually going to be open. I didn't realize it was.
I need a sinus doctor. Forget the masseuse, my god. He's dying from a. Forget the masseuse, I just need like a sinus doctor.
Tom?
Yes.
Phone line. Yeah, they need the phone line, yeah. Give us your backup. Backup singers. Think of us like that. Will you like the background? Would you like?
Coordinated, yes.
That make you extra time in casting?
Yeah.
I, I just, I like to get me started thinking of. Yeah, yeah. What's on your plane? Are you in LA? And so.
Welcome to Reservationless Plus conferencing. Enter your conference code followed by the pound or hash. Thank you. If you are the leader, press star now. Please enter your leader PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. To start or join your conference, press one. You will now be placed into conference. After joining the call, to record the conference for those who may miss this call or for future playback, press star two.
Yes. Last weekend I was down in San Clemente. Well, they, we do sometimes do it with like that, but they're okay with the lesser. So we went back here in the chairs.
So, um, so here we have. Who's holding? What's right? Why do you? Come.
Jenny. Yeah, and so. Right, because Jenny always needs.
No, it's contract nature. It's still in my program. Good, how you doing today?
Hi.
Yeah, you have a good time yesterday?
Oh, yes, very much. I'm glad.
Glad we're doing a little bit more care.
I like that.
I mean, some of the restaurants are actually nice, but.
What I imagine.
White plane is at 6:20. I love the point of time.
Well, I heard that there is not going to be counseling with disabilities. There was some counseling, she said.
No, you can take off in this lot.
Oh, yeah. You know that. You're the expert.
Taking off, taking off under the suit is a lot easier on landing.
Dead landing, right.
Well, I don't even think, I mean, this isn't. I, I'm sure Oakland is qualified down to zero.
Oh, you're.
You know, so. But San Francisco can really get clogged up. Because with zero, zero, uh, landing conditions, even though an airplane can land, they can't land as frequently. You have to wait long for the crews off the runway and all that kind of stuff. And so the air, you know, they get backed up and pretty soon they're starting to pull airplanes on.
Just a second and all.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I mean, when I joined, you know. Yeah, Stacy and I. And it was such a crazy thing.
I'm glad I missed it. I hate to sound selfish, but.
Yeah, no, it was, I was like, what did I get into?
All right, well, we're gonna get started in about, uh, two minutes. All right, everyone, we're gonna get, uh, we're gonna get started.
You need Sarah.
Sarah. Oh, Sarah is not here yet.
Sarah. Well, she's here, but she's talking to Sarah.
You know, I have this thing about use, against using the Cal. I don't know if you know that. Every, every committee I've ever chaired, I'd never use it.
Sean. Vanessa, trying to start.
There's other ways. There are other ways to do it.
Yes.
I did, I did, yeah.
All right, we are, uh, back in open. So Jason Lee again, 11:39. We are, a small note. The announcement of leaving, we're gonna suspend. When I said this, it was gonna be an organic process and that's true to form. So just, you can go, come and go as you please. And we're gonna just revisit the idea of doing that. Well, obviously, you're the only one who's been doing it and now everyone's thinking that we need to do it.
Jason, the simple solution is just to have anyone who is going to be permanently advise the person who's watching the forum.
Okay, well, um, let's, let's, we can deal with that. We'll deal with that later. In a continuing organic process, uh, we are now moving on to item, uh, 704. Uh, and that looks like Leah, Donna, and Dag presenting on that. Hey, you there? Hi.
I'll go ahead and kick us off. Uh, this item brings forward to you implementation plans. These implementation plans are brought forward for information. We developed these pursuant to your direction at the September meeting. Uh, and the plans reflect the action steps that staff intend to take with respect to each of the decisions that you made in September as related to the various sub-entities that were being considered as part of the appendix I review process. So you have a number of, of implementation plans, uh, attached to this agenda item. We do not, um, anticipate going over those in great detail during this presentation. So if you have questions about specific implementation activities, feel free to, to raise them or identify those to us. In addition to the implementation plans on those sub-entity specific recommendations, you also have the implementation steps that staff are recommending with respect to the global recommendations. So those are the recommendations, of course, that are applicable to all of the sub-entities. Not just the sub-entities under review as part of the appendix I process, but all State Bar sub-entities. And you'll see, uh, in the report that we have recommendations with regard to some, but not all. Because some sub-entities, we haven't looked at, uh, really yet, and so we need to do some further work. Um, with respect to the lawyer assistance program, and you did hear quite a bit of public comment on that program at the outset of our meeting. You are asked to make a decision pursuant to the direction that you laid out in September. As you may recall, staff presented three options, or there were three options as part of the September appendix I report as related to the lawyer assistance program. Essentially to retain the program as is, uh, to separate or contract out a portion of the program, specifically the voluntary portion of the lawyer assistance program, or to separate out the entirety of the program. So those are options one, two, and three. Uh, the board asked staff to come back with additional information regarding options two and three, separation of part or all of the LAP program. So you have laid out in this agenda item in some detail, uh, the articulation of what implementation or, or movement towards both options two and three would look like. And in addition, you have a staff recommendation. Uh, the staff recommendation is, uh, option two, to, so to separate out the voluntary portion of the lawyer assistance program to retain the mandatory portion. Uh, and we've outlined our reasons why, as well as the fiscal and staffing implications associated with that recommendation. I will say, and to be, uh, quite clear, um, we do not anticipate that there would be any, uh, reduction or sort of material impact on staff associated with this recommendation. We are contemplating that we would, uh, retain all of the current staff in the lawyer assistance program under either scenarios, uh, two or three. They would obviously need to transition into different functions of the bar, but this is not a proposal that would result in any staff reductions. Um, and also, just sort of speaking to the nature of the public comment, I think the September report fairly extensively laid out our rationale. Uh, we did provide all of you with the Patrick Krill report on the lawyer assistance program and the, the history of concerns regarding, uh, the functioning of the program. And I think most powerfully, of course, you have several surveys of our attorney population that indicate that the fact that the lawyer assistance program is part of the bar presents a chilling, uh, effect on them and on their interest or willingness in seeking our services out on a voluntary basis. And that really is the impetus for the recommendation to separate the voluntary portion. Uh, so just wanted to reaffirm that with the bar, with the board. Uh, lastly, the appendix I process, we've, uh, we've got a great, a great deal of work has been done, but we're not quite to the finish line yet. Just as a reminder, you heard from the law school deans this morning. You will be receiving recommendations regarding law school engagement in January. That will complete the entirety of the CBE-related appendix I process. And in addition, you have the stakeholder processes that are ongoing for both the access commission and the legal services trust fund commission. Uh, we hope to bring recommendations forward regarding both of those sub-entities in January as well. Uh, so that, that concludes my remarks, and I don't know Dag or Donna, who's gonna do the talking and the leading. I think we're gonna start with Dag. Okay. Great.
I'm, I'm gonna speak to the global recommendations that are contained in the report, and then Donna will, um, speak to the specific recommendations that are related to individual sub-entities. Uh, in regard to the global recommendations in the written report, you'll find the table that was presented in the September meeting. Um, I've summarized the recommendations, the global recommendations that are contained in that table. And I'm, I'm not gonna belabor any one of these, but I did wanna speak a little bit just to the, the process. Pretty much every one of these is gonna come back in early 2019. Some of them in fairly complete form, because we've done a, a fair amount of work and are pretty close to ready to bring materials in front of you, and we'll be able to bring those to you in 20, in early 2019. Others will come to you in the form of recommendations of, um, either changes that need to be made to rules or a new process, say, for, um, uh, the terms and the staggering of terms of the volunteers who serve on sub-entities. So, uh, in terms of the items that are in front of you though, and these are, again, summaries of what are contained in the table, um, I would say that the, um, bullets one and three, instituting a formal orientation for volunteers and instituting a conflict of interest policy for volunteers, those are bundled together in a package that we're developing in conjunction with, um, Office of the General Counsel. We've basically taken the orientation and looked at the orientation and information that new volunteers need and divided it into those items that are necessary for compliance. Um, things like the Form 700 conflicts of interest, um, related to financial matters. Uh, other items that, um, Office of the General Counsel has identified that are necessary for legal compliance. We've combined that with orientation to the activities of the bar, to the relationship between the sub-entities and the bar, the charter of the sub-entities, and bundled those two together in terms of, into a single package that will contain both the legal compliance and orientation to the bar relationship between the sub-entity and the Board of Trustees and the strategic plan of the bar, those types of matters. Those are all enumerated in the report. The second bullet here, instituting and enforcing. The second bullet here, instituting and enforcing term limits for all volunteers, this is additional, we need additional information to move forward on this. We're currently compiling all of the information with regard to the various different terms of all of the sub-entities and the current members of the sub-entities, and are gonna come back with a complete proposal related to, um, what those terms should look like and how we can stagger those in a rational way so that we're not dealing with, um, a, a block of all of our appointments at one particular time in the year, but rather, we're able to bring those before you in a staggered manner so that you're, we have an ongoing rotation, uh, of volunteers from all of the different sub-entities. The formalization of desired qualifications, bullet number four there, is something that we're gonna be seeking input from each of the sub-entities to, to bring back to you. So this is information that we didn't feel that we ourselves could finalize without actually going to the existing, um, volunteers serving on the sub-entities, ensuring that we get their input with regard to what those qualifications should be, and then coming back to you with, uh, with those, uh, qualifications finalized. Bullets, uh, five and six are actually waiting on the finalization of the board book. So we are currently working on a complete revision of the board book. Within the board books, there's an entire section that relates to sub-entities and that has specific information related to the sub-entity size, um, as well as justification for sub-entities that exceed or are fewer than seven members. Um, we're currently finalizing that work, and we'll also be pulling that information into the recommendations that come before you with regard to finalization of the board book. And that's also true of the second to last bullet there, the instituting of sunset reviews for all sub-entities. That process is gonna be formalized and, uh, included in what's, I think, section, I want to say, section four of the board book revisions that will be coming before you in, uh, January. And then the final, um, bullet there, elimination of sub Entity nominations committee. This is an item that we're gonna be bringing before all of the sub-entities and, um, asking each one of the sub-entities to formalize this, and we'll primarily be reporting back to you about the finalization of this, uh, this bullet on the global recommendations. Joanna.
The, um, the sunset review, or the review of the sub-entities every five years, was something that already existed in our big board book. Um, and maybe because of the size, it was lost, but I think it's a great idea. We weren't following it, uh, in the past. And I just, I wanna make sure that there's some, other than just being in the board book, it would be nice to make sure it's on something so that the board knows it's coming up and you're not required to read through the board book to know what you have to do. I don't know what the plan is on the part of staff, whether it shows up in a work plan for years in advance or what have you, but it needs to happen and it, just putting it in the board book, board book failed in the past. So we need a better solution on making sure it happens.
I think that, um, that concern, Joanna, is not unique to submitting a review. I mean, it kind of speaks to our, uh, broader challenges with what I would call globally compliance, um, as an organization. I mean, part of it is dependent on our being well-run. I mean, there, there is a little bit of a trust element, uh, there. But the board book is going to be significantly shorter, and we are trying to really highlight in that book what the board's actual responsibilities are. And I think it'll be easier to find, um, in terms of being a, a check on staff. We are working, I think that we presented it at the last meeting, on an overall compliance tool. We're starting with statutory compliance and, and working down. Uh, but ultimately, on that tool, will be compliance with the board book. And that compliance tool will outline all of their requirements and will be available to all of the board. So I think we've started to think about it. I don't have a, a great answer for you. It will need to show up on a work plan in the relevant years, just like the governance and the Public Interest Task Force review every three years. So there, there are a number of things that we are, we are tracking, uh, and we need to figure out kind of the optimal mechanism for doing so.
It may be helpful to put dates or years in that section so it's easier to recognize when the time is coming. Let's say, you know, twenty twenty-four, you know, twenty twenty-nine, what have you. Identify the years going out until it becomes a standard practice, because, you know, if for something, you know, there was an earthquake and half the people died and everybody, God forbid, that was left had no idea what we were doing, it would be, it would be helpful to have that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, is this the handoff to Donna, or?
This is the handoff to Donna.
All right.
I'm gonna talk about the, um, lawyer assistance program options. Uh, before I get started in that, just so we don't forget, I wanna mention that there may be, um, members on the phone who wanna give some public comment on the lawyer assistance program, um, piece of that. So I wanna make sure that we have the opportunity to go to them, um, after I present, if they're there. Um, and, um, and with that, I will get started on lawyer assistance program. As Leah.
Donna, I'm sorry to interrupt. Are we on the conference line? I don't think we are, so let me, let me. Simply the privacy button?
Donna, so, just so I'm clear, these are individuals in addition to the one, the public comment that we heard?
There may be members of the, of the committee itself.
Oh, I see. Okay. And maybe, or they actually are?
Maybe.
Okay.
Shall we do a sound check?
Yeah. Hello? Uh, you're, can you hear us?
Team Nurse, are you joining the work of these meetings in discussion on the appendix I patients of LAP? I understand you were all behind, you have no problem. This is your option, yourself? All point once, point twice. Well, someone gives out to you one interesting question.
Yeah, absolutely, and it, it may be that they, um, that the committee felt comfortable that the, um, the letter that they had submitted, which is included at the end of this, um, agenda item as attachment D, I believe, um, covered their, their concern, so that, that may be why. But I just wanted to, I had been told that there would be several members making, uh, comments, so I just wanted to make sure that we didn't, um, inadvertently exclude them. Um, so, um, one other thing, actually, before I get to the lawyer assistance program, just to show you that, um...
Wait, until we do get the problem. Please pronounce, in case somebody calls in.
Just to show you that these implementation plans have a little bit of fluidity to them. Uh, I, I am actually going to be, um, there's actually a date change that we need to make on the implementation plan for COAF. There was a specific item on that implementation plan where we, where we indicated that based on input that, that was received at, at the joint meeting with the programs committee, that COAF's charge would be revised. Um, and so we had anticipated doing that by the end of December. Based on the discussion that we had with the programs committee yesterday, I think it's more realistic that that charge would be revised after the planning session with the board. So I would change that implementation date, um, completion date from December twenty eighteen to February twenty nineteen. Now, moving on to the lawyer assistance program. Uh, one reminder with regard to the lawyer assistance program, the program itself and the oversight committee are largely creatures of statute. And so, um, as with other things that are statutory that the board has been doing with appendix I, um, a, as I see it, the board is identifying what it thinks is the proper thing to do, what it thinks is the right way to govern this. Because so much of the lawyer assistance program and the oversight committee are creatures of statute, obviously, we need the legislature to concur with the direction that the board sets on this. And, and so the implementation plan assumes statutory changes would happen during, uh, during twenty nineteen, um, a, and that would be necessary in order to, to implement either of the options that were recommended. Uh, as Leah teed up for you, uh, at the beginning, um, at the September meeting, there were three options presented to the board. We had robust discussion about those three options. The board determined that option one, which was really retaining the program, um, as is, with some, some streamlining and, and tightening up, the board, the board determined that that was not the appropriate direction to go in, directed staff to develop implementation plans for options two and options three, um, which is what you have in your agenda item, um, at, in attachment B at, um, pages B thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, um, thirteen through fifteen. So, again, option two, um, would have the bar retain the, um, referrals from, from the alternative discipline plant, uh, program, as well as, uh, referrals from, from moral character. So people who are having their, uh, having moral character determination made, um, there, there's a referral that is sometimes made to the lawyer assistance program. It would be the, the other referrals, the, um, uh, what we call the self-referrals, the voluntary LAP or the support LAP, tend to use those terms interchangeably. Um, those would be, uh, those, those would be transferred or contracted with, uh, with an outside entity. Um, the, um, taking a look at the current caseload, um, what that mean, what that means is about sixty-two percent of the current caseload is currently moral character and alternative discipline program. Um, so the remaining thirty-eight percent of the caseload is what would be, um, what would no longer be a, a bar function in, uh, in option two. So using that sixty-two percent number, um, we sort of ran some, some rough numbers for you. Um, a, and you'll see next to a lot of the budget numbers in the slides in front of you that there are some asterisks there. Um, and, um, and that's because the, the numbers don't precisely match what's in the agenda item, and I will explain why. Um, so we, uh, indicate there that the, the budget of, um, of LAP is about one point nine million dollars, and so sixty-two percent of that with the bar retained would be one point two million. Um, and seven hundred thousand would be, um, what would be available for, uh, an entity that contracts for the support services. Uh, the current budget of the LAP program is actually about two point one million dollars, um, and that's based on the revenue that we receive from the licensing fees. Ten dollars for all active attorneys, five dollars for inactive attorneys goes to, um, goes to lawyer assistance program. Uh, as part of legislation this year, one dollar of that ten dollars is now being diverted, um, to the other bar. And so just sort of rough math, taking ten percent off of the amount that's in the budget on a going-forward basis, we'll only have the one point nine million as opposed to the, the, um, two point one million, um, in order, uh, for LAP. So, so that's why the numbers differ slightly there. So we looked at, so how do you do this? How do you contract out part of the, the part of the caseload? And there seem to be two, two options. Um, one, um, one way to do that would be for the board, for the bar, to, um, to continue to be statutorily obligated to provide these services. But we would contract out for the, so, so we would, we would be obligated for the function, to continue the function, but we would contract out the delivery. So we would contract out with an entity, um, to provide the particular services. The other option, um, that I inaptly described, describe as we would sort of lift out the function, and it would be taken over entirely by another entity. So the, the bar would no longer statutorily be required to perform the function. The entire function, um, would belong to an, at, another entity, uh, a non, an existing nonprofit, a new nonprofit, um, would be providing those, those services. So those are sort of the two ways to look at it. We are not, at this point, making a recommendation of which of those two options, sort of the sub-options of option two and option three, uh, makes the most sense. We're proposing in the implementation plan that staff continue to explore with stakeholders which one of those options makes more sense. Are there entities out there that we could contract all of the services to? Or is it more likely that we would find an entity that would just take the program as a whole? The reason this is an issue, um, 'cause I see physical looks on some of your faces, is, um, is LAP, um, i- i- if we're gonna be continuing the model that we use with our lawyer assistance program, it is not, it is not just substance use issues, it's also mental health issues, and it's a clinical, a clinical model. So it's not just, you know, would, would another entity that provides peer support for substance use be able to take it? Right? Because it's, it's also the mental health, and it's not just peer support. And what we don't wanna do is create a situation where we're contracting with a hundred different entities to take different pieces of the program. So we wanna continue to explore whether there are sort of a small number of entities, you know, uh, very, you know, hopefully one, um, that we could sort of contract the services out to, if that's the model we go with. Otherwise, it would make sense to lift the entire function out and provide that, uh, have another entity assume the entire function. Um, so we'll be coming back to the board in March. We're proposing, um, with the recommendation of, of sort of that sub-option, what Dag has listed here on the, in the slide, is option two A versus option two B. And then just, um, as we were talking about the, the costs of, of implementing option two and option three, in addition, I'm sorry, back to option two, Dag. Um, so in addition to, to looking at how much of the ongoing revenue would be available for, uh, for, for the bar and for the contracted-out services, also, again, sort of doing the rough math of if the sort of current, um, uh, proportion of, uh, of the caseload that is the voluntary or support or self-referrals is thirty-eight percent, then, um, then five of the, of the eight LAP staff would remain with the bar doing the sixty-two percent of referrals, and the remaining three would be, we would find other, other functions within the bar, but they would no longer be part of LAP. Additionally, there is the cost of, um, indirect cost or overhead that would need to be absorbed, um, by the, the general fund, by the rest of the bar in, um, uh, in, uh, shutting down, um, part of the, sort of all, some or all of, of LAP. And those, um, that's described in, um, option two B as well. The general fund would absorb an additional two hundred thousand, very roughly estimated, um, of overhead, um, in that, in that option. Moving on to, to option three, um, that's where the bar would retain none of the functions. Um, the function of, um, of, um, managing, uh, the, all of the LAP functions would, would be separated from the bar. The bar would retain no portion of the, um, of the program anymore. Um, and, um, again, sort of taking a look now, we sort of did some of the same math with the numbers, so the entirety of the one point nine million dollar, uh, revenue that we would get for the program would be transferred to, um, and would be available to another entity, whether we would be contracting with that other entity for the delivery of the services with the function remaining with the bar, or in fact, um, un, under option three B, um, uh, the entire function would be mov, would be moving, in which case, all of the revenue would be transferred on, on an ongoing basis. Um, and additionally, um, all of the reserves that we have, um, would, um, would be transferred in that, in that instance, if we were, if we were, uh, if another entity, so it took over the entirety of the function. And I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any more of the specifics of the implementation plan, but really, the key is that we'll be exploring, sort of, is it sort of the contract or the lifting out of the function, and coming back to you with that in March. We, it would envision with either of these options, assuming the legislative concurrence with the board direction, that we would, um, that the, um, LAP Oversight Committee under either of these options would be eliminated, um, as of the end of twenty nineteen, and we would be awarding a contract or, or, um, transferring the functions, um, by January twenty twenty.
Renee?
Yeah, uh, Renee Lebron. Quick question, when you were thinking about, uh, like, the lifting out option, I know maybe you haven't got that far, but it kind of strikes me, at one point nine million is a pretty small organization. And so, you know, you've got two hundred thousand of overhead allocated now, but it could be very hard for a small organization to, you won't have any shared services, so the overhead could become quite significant. I just wondered if you looked at that at all?
Yeah, certainly, the, that sort of leads to the question of, would it make sense? And what we would propose to do ultimately is an RFP, to see who would be interested in, in taking on the services, or I, either way we do this. Um, but, um, it, it certainly leads to the question of, would it maybe make more sense, not for it to not be a standalone entity, but an existing nonprofit that this function would now, um, would now attach itself to? And so that's one of the things that we're exploring, was whether there are existing nonprofits out there that, that it might make sense for, for that very reason.
And, and on that one, I mean, the one concern I would have is how you, um, how you preserve the mission, because you're subject to their mission change.
And so certainly, one of the things that we know that we would need to do, even if we're entirely lifting out the function, it's going to another entity, you'd be transferring, uh, revenue that would be coming in through the licensing fees. And so we would have to have some sort of contractual arrangement. And so we would have to have some sort of contractual arrangement with this organization similar to what we have, you know, with CLA where we're transferring the, the revenue, revenue to them. In, in this instance, you know, we would develop some, some reporting requirements. We would presumably have to, you know, rebid the, the proposal, the contract, you know, every, I don't know, three, five years. So that way we would have the ability to say that they are taking the licensing revenue for this purpose. And we would have some oversight in a way of saying, by saying it's not sort of, they're not carrying this out in a way that, that we think is appropriate, appropriate for the use of this money. And so we would have to develop what those reporting requirements are so we could ensure that the program was still be, was still operating appropriately once it's outside of the bar.
Joanna?
The concern that I had with the financing of option two was that it's based on current numbers. And ideally, and one of the, if I can properly characterize our discussion last time, one of the concerns was the, the lack of participation in the program because of its affiliation with the state bar. Ideally, the whole purpose of this is that there'll be a significantly more voluntary participation because it's not affiliated with the disciplinary agency anymore. And so that number of participants should be rising. So how do we address, if we did option two, the change in percentage? Because we, it's not appropriate for us to leave it at what it is now because the whole point is that it's going to be used more.
Well, but part of the math, as I look at it, is to say, how much of the revenue that we get currently are we needing to spend for the, for the alternative discipline program and for the moral characters program? If we are keeping that, we're still going to need to spend that money in order to support that, that part of the function. And so although I agree with you that the, that one of, one of the key reasons, one of the key arguments behind the separation is that there isn't sufficient utilization because of the association with the state bar. And ideally, there would be an increase, there wouldn't be a concomitant decrease in the sort of the amount of the caseload that would be the ADP referrals and the moral character. So I, so I'm not certain that we would be in a position to be able to provide additional, an additional proportion of the, of the revenue.
I would just say though, to add to that, certainly with respect to the ADP population, it will make a lot of sense to fully integrate the staffing support for that function in our office of probation. And I think you will realize some economies of scale. And that may bring the cost of providing services to that particular population down. We still have to kind of figure out if it would make sense for probation to provide services to the referrals from the Office of Admissions. But certainly for the ADP population, that's one way that we could potentially free up additional resources for the voluntary side. And then, you know, the other piece of this is if the utilization grew significantly, I think part of our role would be to advocate for an increase in the LAP fee to fund voluntary services. So, I mean, right now, there's a, it's not a challenge because it's something we all really want. But say we had a fivefold increase in people that wanted to participate in the program, we would struggle without issue whether it stays with the bar or it doesn't. So.
I'm not sure I agree with that. It would be kind of so much of the revenue hasn't been used and has been held in reserve. And we have this huge reserve for LAP. And, you know, for us to take sixty-two percent of even that that's not being used doesn't make sense that it's, it's the percentage. If we had a dollar amount that we were talking about that we felt we needed, that would be one thing. But saying a percentage of all of the revenue that we're collecting through fees is another. And also a little concerned about us being in a position to go back to the legislature to ask for more if we're in a situation like this next year where we are concerned about if we ask for more, for one thing, it's going to take away from something else we might want or need. And so LAP would be, by separating them, they would have the opportunity to go to the legislature themselves without any conflict and say, we want more money if they felt it was necessary. But I think if there's an affiliation with us, there could be a problem with that. I, I see advantages to option three simply because I think it's cleaner and it doesn't address these problems. We don't have to struggle with them as much.
So one of the, one of the things that we were struggling with a little bit on option three is, is getting the services back for the moral character referrals and, and it's sort of how we would, you know, roll in, you know, the ADP or a drug court model because we'd still want to be providing that. And so would we be contracting back for, for that? We're still struggling with exactly how that, how that sort of part would work. And so that was one thing that, that from the staff perspective, it felt like, because, because we know that those are, those are pieces that the, that the bar would need to continue to do in some fashion, that it seemed, it seemed cleaner to recommend option two.
If we did option three, and since we're going to have to do statutory changes anyway, we could ask, there's already a dollar going to another entity. Maybe we could ask for a certain portion of that money to come to the state bar for purposes of an ADP program and the moral character aspect of it. So we, we'll have the funding, we can contract with them to address, to do those things if we wanted to. But we would have the option, but we would get a certain piece of it so we could pursue that. It's just, we can thought.
Sean?
Um, so sort of a variation on what Joanna is saying and Leah also, but when, when the slide is talking about the entire one point nine million dollar budget available to LAP, that would include the amount that's currently not being used and is being saved in reserves? Is that correct?
Yes, so historically, there has been a, a significant amount that's, that's, that's gone to reserves every year. In part, we, we expect that number to be, not to be smaller this year. And we've hired the, the outreach person. And so we do expect that number to be smaller. There's also been statutory changes that would allow the bar to pay for treatment services because we haven't been able to pay for that statutorily. And that, and, and part of the rationale for pursuing that was because there has been the underutilized amount of, of the, of the budget to date.
Right, okay. So, so I realize you're just sort of putting out ideas for how to do this. So, but it does seem to me that rather than looking at the available budget, you would want to not, maybe not do exactly zero-based budgeting, but you'd want to look at what is needed to, if we do option two, what resources are needed to continue that function within the state bar? Not by reference to the available budget, by the reference to how many people we need and data around that. And then figure out how to deal with the other piece, which is what the demand will be for voluntary services, which we expect and hope will be higher if it's outsourced. But, so I would just kind of conceptually come at it from that approach rather than looking at just available dollars because I think that's going to kind of skew the analysis.
Yeah, it was sort of a, a very crude attempt to basically do that, but yeah, from a different starting point.
Mark?
Yeah, Mark Roden. Do you have, and I have a couple of thoughts here. How many people are actually participating in the program currently? In other words, you have two sort of groups, voluntary and involuntary. What are the, what are the numbers of these people right now?
So I don't have the numbers off, off the top of my head. I know there were, I think there were, there were, you know, in the annual report that we put out in March for the, the prior year, I think there were a hundred and forty-three new intakes and maybe two hundred and, two hundred and twenty-six. The, the numbers two hundred and twenty-six and two hundred and forty-seven are floating around in my head. So one of those was sort of the, the total population at the time of, of the program.
Just, so I, I'm not holding you to these, but a hundred and forty-three would be the involuntary.
No, that was just the new, the new intakes, whether it was involuntary or not. We, we published a, an annual report which lays out the statistics in the division of how many of the cases were ADP, how many were moral character, how many were self referrals? And it was using those numbers that we determined that sixty-two percent of the caseload was ADP and moral character. And, and the rest was, were the voluntary or the self referrals or support LAP.
So I would like to know what it is with respect to option two. What it is we're actually referring out or we're contemplating referring out? And how many people are those and what, what does it consist of? And then how, how many, you know, anticipated as well? How many are we contemplating keeping?
So, so Mark, I'm just pulling up this report. So in two thousand seventeen, as Donna remembered, we had a hundred and forty-three intakes. Forty-five percent of those were from the Committee of Bar Examiners or pre-CBX. That means they weren't even a referral from the committee, it was voluntary, a lost gem coming. So that's just really striking, that's a huge percentage. Sixteen percent were in our alternative discipline program. So the portion, how we're getting to that sixty-two percent are those two populations combined. So the remainder is other and non-discipline. So there, there, the remainder is the voluntary portion that we would send out. But that base N number you're talking, you're asking for is I would just use the hundred and forty-three intakes. So you're talking about fifty people, maybe fifty new intakes a year on the voluntary side. This is very rough.
Yeah, very rough. And then you're comparing that to the cost of referring them roughly. And I want to sort of throw this out too. I, I, you talk about, you know, we don't know yet what entity and how it's going to be done. And I certainly would like to know when you resolve that. And the reason is, I'm sure Brandon is familiar with this problem. We deal with this problem in courts every single day. There are so few qualified programs for substance abuse and alcohol treatment. And there are even fewer, if any, for mental health components of this. As a matter of fact, the governor just signed a bill a month or so ago whereby somebody with mental health issues, if that contributed to their being involved in the criminal justice system, that it would be referred for diversion instead of prosecution. However, there's no programs to refer them and all of this kind of stuff. And we're struggling with that right now. So I, I, I think it may be, it may be more challenging than you might think to find a quote unquote program that would meet the needs of the people that we're servicing, fifty or otherwise. So I, I really would like to see what it is we come up with in that regard. Because I'm struggling with this issue. I know Michael has, has expressed that in the past. It's, it's something that we need to deal with, with attorneys. But I'm, I'm struggling with the issue because I'm not sure now that separating it out, and particularly hearing the comments here, you know, that we're going to be able to do what we want to do, which I think is, you know, I, it's good, we need to do that.
Well, so the model that we currently use here at the bar, right? We only have, have staff situated in San Francisco and in Los Angeles. The, the model that we have is, is we do the, the, the intake and the initial assessment. There are support groups with a, with a clinician that occur regionally. And to the extent that there's a recommendation for treatment that is needed by a, by a clinician, that treatment happens in the local communities.
Right.
So, so I would envision that a, it's sort of a similar process could happen if we were to have another entity doing this, where the entity itself wouldn't necessarily be located in Fresno or in Bakersfield, but that there would be sort of the ability to have clinical providers on contract with them that would be providing the services the same way that, you know, we, we would indicate to people, you know, the need to have, to, you know, seek treatment from a, from a licensed professional. And they would, they would, they would, they would get the treatment and we would get the reports back if it were a monitored program.
As a reminder, Mark, under either of these scenarios, we're going out for an RFP, so we'll see what we get. We certainly have some, had some interest expressed to us already. But we'd go out for an RFP and this contract would then come back to the board for approval. So, so you would get information, I think, that could address your concerns. And if we don't get viable bidders, we don't get viable bidders. That would.
Part of my concern is on the voluntary part is, and I don't mean to demean any of the efforts of anybody that is here, but why are we doing that? Why would you not just refer them to a local assessor or a local program? Why are we being involved in it and, and spending that money? Should we only be involved in the portion, the, the other portion of that? We, we, as in the state bar?
Well, I, I think that's, I think that's the very thing that we're trying to do right now. That was, that's why option one was not selected by the board in September because of the view that maybe the board shouldn't be doing, the, the bar shouldn't be doing those voluntary, those voluntary pieces. And the bar should only be doing the, the moral character and the ADP or, or none at all. Those are the differences between option two or three. So I think that's, you know, as I read the decision, the action of the board in September, that's exactly what the board was saying was, was we, 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 the board don't think we should be doing option, we should, don't think we should be doing self referrals or the voluntary or support LAP. We're not sure if we should be doing the other part of it. And so come back with the, with the implementation plans that would have us just doing the, the monitored piece, the ADP and the moral character or doing none at all.
Renee?
Okay.
Joanna and then Sean.
Okay. I more envision it, Mark, as moving the LAP out, not, and not necessarily creating anything new. I mean, for example, if the California Lawyers Association suitably decided that it would make sense for the statewide bar association to take on this function, I see it more as moving it to them and not creating something new. The advantage being we have funding already associated and set in statute for them. And that was in Patrick Krill's report, that was his biggest concern about us changing this, is that there'd be a loss of funding. Well, I think we've all committed to making sure that doesn't happen. And so as long as this program has funding, as long as it, and it's separate from the disciplinary agency of this, of, for lawyers, that, you know, there's an organization out there much better suited to provide the service and get actual participation. So there's a chance, of course, CLA won't take it and maybe it's somebody else. That seems the ideal solution to me, especially with one of the public comments being that there's some level of comfort that is affiliated with a bar association. And I, I would, I would just again say, there's a difference between a bar association and the disciplinary agency. And it's the disciplinary agency aspect of this that is really inhibiting participation.
I, I would also note, because it was raised by the public comment, that yes, the, the report that you all saw from Patrick Krill in September as part of the appendix I recommendations did ultimately conclude that for some of the reasons that, for the funding reason and for fear of disruption in the program, that he was recommending that for, for a period of time at least, that the entirety of LAP stay with the bar. It was, he, he was struggling to come up with sort of what his recommendation would be because there were, the, a report that we received from, from him the year prior due to a, a prior contract that we had with him, he actually concluded the opposite. And so he was, he was very much concerned about funding and, and disruption. And that's what led to, that, that I think was what led to the ultimate conclusion that he had made about keeping it here. So sort of less that sort of concern resonate with you that, hey, we paid a consultant to come up with a recommendation and now we're doing something different. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on that as well.
I just want to clarify something, Leah. So the, about the buckets of, of participants that would be in mandatory versus voluntary? So mandatory is ADP, obviously. Moral character referrals is when the Committee on Bar Examiners either requests or requires?
It's now, and I, we're changing that to the Office of Admissions because it changes to the moral character process, right? They, I don't, is it a requirement?
So they would put the moral character determination in abeyance, so they would, they will not weigh in on the moral character. Usually it's, we'll put the moral character determination in abeyance contingent on you going to LAP for three months, six months, one year. And they have the monitored. a- and they have the monitored uh work with LEP, and then they, we get the report back, and then the determination is made by formerly Committee of Bar Examiners, now it'll be staff. Okay, based on the, the recommendations of LEP, they have um they sort of recognize the issues and, and sort of going through that analysis, would determine at that point whether the person um was of uh, was of good moral character.
Got it, and then, yeah, you had mentioned, I think I heard you say CBX?
That, that is um Committee of Bar Examiners, sorry.
Oh, I was thinking it was just people who were just taking the, okay, never mind.
No, I, I mentioned, I'm sorry, that's the acronym we use in that report. And then pre-CBX is, is, those are folks not, ha- who haven't come into contact yet with the committee, students.
Yeah.
Um presumably, or applicants, but to um mitigate against what they anticipate to be a problem, they voluntarily seek out LEP services.
I, so that is my question then, whether, is that group, is that really in the mandatory group or the voluntary group?
That would be in the voluntary group, you're right, and I, we don't have the breakout in, in this report between the referrals and then the voluntary portion of that population. The non-attorney population.
Right, that was just my question, so those, those would be voluntary.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You know, so much to put together, glossary of all our acronyms. Sonia?
I just wanna, I have a quick question, I, I don't know if it is here, or you mentioned that the low participation is because it is associated with a bar. Did someone make a statement?
Yeah. So Sonia, that, that's right.
That's right.
In that uh there, there was a understanding that there isn't a, a higher participation in the voluntary portion of LEP because of its association with a, with the bar, because of its discipline function. So you're essentially walking in uh to an agency that disciplines lawyers who may have substance abuse, mental illness, um and that theory being that it would make people uncomfortable just to walk in and have that agency service uh your needs.
And, and we did a survey of um a random sample of twenty-five thousand uh licensees and asked them about uh LEP and what they know about LEP, and uh would they come to the bar for, uh for these services? Um, would they go to other places, if other places are not the bar, what's the reason? And um, and oddly, the question, the same question was asked in two different ways and got wildly different responses, but regardless, the, the number of people who would come to the bar was, was, was the percentage respondents who said they would come to the bar was incredibly low, and the, the biggest concern noted was confidentiality. Um, no matter how we set, we say, no matter what statute we point to, what rule we point to, the fact that we that we indicate that there, that the case data for LEP is maintained in a completely separate database than anything else at the bar, um there is a, there is a concern that um, that, that the confidentiality of this lawyer or law student um will be breached, and that the agency that, that either admits them to the bar or disciplines um them uh will sort of know of this issue, and, and so that was a really uh incredibly large barrier to participation.
However, um we do have any messaging to them, and you, you did say that you, you, no matter how you tried to uh but I think that if, you know, there'll be more assurance of, you know, safety and privacy and all that will.
We've certainly beefed up the language on our brochures um to make it clear, you know, where we can say, you know, we are prohibited by law from, and right, these are presumably lawyers and lawyers-to-be, and we're citing statutes and um everything that, that we can, um and a- again, this was uh, this was, this is, you know, a concern that existing lawyers that we surveyed have, despite their, their knowledge of that. And um, and it is not unique to California, it's something that we've heard from other, uh from others uh around the country as well that have LEPs. Um, LEPs are, are associated with, with bars, they're separate standalone, they're sort of different, um, they're part of the court, uh different structures and configurations across the, the country.
If I can weigh in on that, um, it goes to, just, people just don't trust governmental agencies to, you know, do any of that, to keep it, despite all those things, there just is no trust. And especially when you're talking about someone with, with one of these issues, and they are already afraid of losing their license or not getting admitted, um, it's, it really hinders participation.
The system has detected that a minimum number of lines are connected to this conference.
I just wanted to, to bring us back perhaps to, to make sure everyone's clear about what, what at least we are asking you to do is to make a decision between option two and three. Um, at this point, that's really all we need, uh because under either scenario, we'd be going out for RFP, we'll get information back, that will inform this sort of sub-issue of the A and the B. We can do the analyses, and certainly, um both Sean and Joanna, what you've suggested in terms of doing something more um thoughtful around the uh distribution or the allocation of the funding, we can do that, and we would need to do that actually before we go out for RFP, so that we can be clear with respective um prospective vendors about how much money they would be getting. So we'll do that differentiated analysis and do an RFP, but I wanted to be um kind of clear that it's between option two and three uh at this point.
Right, no, and I think Sonia's question was just more to get some additional context to where, why, why we're here, um, Ruben?
Do you anticipate any difference in the legislature's acceptance of either option A or B? Two or three.
Two, two or three.
Two or three, thank you.
Um, I, I, we don't, we have not, um, I don't believe we have um uh solicited their, their input as to, as to which that they would prefer, so I couldn't speak to what I think that they might be more receptive to.
I think they'll be more receptive to, to two. But we, but as Don indicated, that's part of what we will do during these next couple of months is figure that out definitively, I think we have some belief.
Um, Brandon, Josh, and I'm also mindful of the time um as well.
I, I was going to make a motion to adopt option two and speak briefly as to that.
Okay.
So, I think for those who have been on the board for a while, have heard from, from Patrick Krill, uh from the CYLA, the Young Lawyers Association, when they were a part of us, uh have heard anecdotal stories from even board members, uh and then also from the LEP, LEP staff about what um, you know, the magnitude of this issue that's facing lawyers, that uh some cert- some studies, fifty percent of lawyers report um substance abuse issues within their first sixteen years of practice. This is an area that the bar needs to take leadership in. Sending all of the functions of LEP outside of the bar, I think sends a wrong message to our lawyers that we govern, um, the bar needs to take a strong um stand in this area, and I'm concerned with that messaging. Uh, we've already previously discussed option one and participation with the voluntary aspects. Uh, we're now looking at the mandatory um aspects of LEP, and I think it's important not to use the reasons we jettisoned um the voluntary to attack the mandatory side of things, so that's why I'm in support of option two.
Okay, Josh?
Um, Josh Bertulla, uh, John, has there been a, uh, any examples of the option two hybrid that you've seen um implemented anywhere else?
I don't, I, I, I'm not, I'm not certain.
Another, uh, um, I'm just, um, uh, I agree with Brandon, I, I, I think that there is a um reason to keep some of the functions, I'm just trying to figure out, um, if we're just duplicating efforts. Uh, the question that Joanna had about the expense of running uh, uh two um at the same time, um, and I just was curious if any other regulatory agency um has done that before.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just don't have the answer to that.
I, I have not received a second.
I'll second with a, a comment, um, so I tend to favor option two. I do think this is a somewhat preliminary decision because we don't have all the information in front of us in terms of exactly how it will be implemented, or if it's totally feasible to implement, because those, those questions have been raised. And um, so with that qualification, I would, I would support number two. Uh, the only question I have is how are we gonna get this information, in other words, I understand we have to get legislative change to pursue either option, I think the board can express a preference for how to proceed. But I'm just anticipating that between discussions with the legislature and investigations of who can provide these functions and under what circumstances, there could be some development, so, for example, I don't really favor option three hypothetically, but, you know, we could find if, if we do more actual investigation that splitting, splitting the um the voluntary portion off is not gonna lead to a big enough organization to be functional, or maybe it's not gonna work to find another organization to run it, whereas option three would be more viable as a completely independent organization, so I just throw that out for consideration. But with that said, the board, staff's asking for the board's uh preference at this time, and I, for me, it would be two.
A- and certainly, as we are engaging stakeholders between now and the March board meeting, where we're, we'll be talking about sort of the two A versus the two B, we can be fleshing that, that piece out as well. Um, so we can get a, we can get a preliminary sense without sort of issuing an RFP at that time, if there, if there might be entities that would be willing to take um just the, the, the self-referral side.
I guess I'm just saying, I would interpret this motion not to be, not to rule out consideration of option three, is if your further investigations cause you to conclude there are viability problems with option two. Does that make sense? No.
Okay. Uh, we have a second, uh, any further discussion? Um, so I have a question, so we received public comment the first time this came before us relating to the idea that having a uh combined mandatory and voluntary unified, I guess, uh entity um offered certain synergies that would not be present in a split. Which was, which caused me to think perhaps option three um would result in a better entity uh able to serve um both the needs of folks who voluntarily submit to the program and people that we would send over. Did you have any thoughts on, on that following the public comment?
So the um, the gentleman who, who made that comment is a, is a mem- member of the LEP Oversight Committee, and he was, um, he was he was troubled that that comment was, was taken in a way that um, that led to a, a supportive option three. Um, certainly his uh intention was um for that to drive the board toward option one, um keeping, keeping the program, um, so, uh, so it, it wasn't his comment was not intended as a distinction between option two and option three.
Okay, yeah, I know, it certainly, I understood him to support option one, uh but I think it was, at least for me, um, clear that we couldn't proceed under option one given the data that we were getting, um, which then led me to sort of think about option three. Uh, the other, the other question I had was relating to, I think, Lita's uh public comment on the increased outreach and the result, the results of increased voluntary participation. How long has, has that been happening, um, and are, are you seeing sort of a reverse of the trend um from what we, that we've seen historically?
So, um, so we've been doing the outreach for just a few months now, um, and the outreach has um, has in large part been to law students who were actually not, um, up until January, were not um a- able to be participants at all. So it, so there is a, a little bit of a, of both factors going into the um, into the increase. Um, we changed the statute and the rule back in January that opened up LEP to law students um for the first time. Um, but certainly, going out and selling the program and explaining what it is um has, has had an impact. And, you know, the number of people who have called and, or, I am told that, I'm told that people have called and said, I heard somebody speak on Friday at the school, and, um, and so, you know, I, I'm interested. Um, as I said, you know, having sixty, I think it was sixty-eight people call of the thousand or so people that, that they've talked to, and, and, um, you know, the prior numbers, um, she'd had updated numbers today. Um, previously, they said they'd had sixty-eight people call and fifty-two of them had actually signed up to the program. There's no question that that is, um, that that is a, a high rate, and so the outreach um, I would, arguably, the outreach is serving exactly the purpose that it was intended to.
Right, and there's no reason to think if there was, if we adopted option two, that outre- outreach would cease or that we wouldn't experience the same results?
Yeah, certainly, certainly the bar wouldn't be doing the outreach, but one of the things, you know, I would envision, as with our, our, um you know, when the section separated, we had some discussions with CLA about providing them, you know, whether they would have access to uh email distribution lists for licensees, and so that could certainly be part of any contractual arrangement that we would have, sort of appropriate, you know, whatever the appropriate sharing of licensee um contact information um would be, so they could have the same kind of outreach to licensee, existing licensees, and obviously, the, the law schools um are, um, uh, you know, there's, there's no sort of private list that we hold of, of the California law schools, so, um so we would, um, a- and we could certainly even build that in as part of, um, you know, uh, the requirements for you know, you're going to get X, you know, X dollars from every licensee fee, here's what we expect you to do with those. We expect you to do outreach and to report to us regularly on X, Y, and Z to ensure that, that you are properly utilizing the licensee fee revenue.
Okay, thank you, um, Joanna?
Um, I very much appreciate all the public comment we received today, and I understand the passion and, and why they were making their public comment. It would have been particularly helpful to hear their perspective on the two options that we're actually looking at today, and I really feel like we're missing their perspective on whether or not they think option two or option three is better, because they were so focused on wanting us to go back to option one. So while I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and, and vote in favor of Brandon's motion, I would still like to hear from those in, that are running the program, what they think is better, and if if they think option three is better, I definitely wanna know about it before we go too far down the road with option two.
So certainly, the LEP Oversight Committee um met after the board's action in September, and although the Oversight Committee, a- as we've expressed, as you see in their letter, is strongly supporting option one, they also unanimously voted as between option two and option three, if that is what the board was considering, they unanimously voted in support of option two.
Did they, okay, Donna, isn't that reflected in Stuart Shea's letter?
It is.
Yeah.
Well, it says, I think, they said they just didn't, maybe I didn't read it.
Yeah, i- if, yeah, if it's not, I think I, it's included in my summary in the agenda item.
They had problems with both and only wanted one, according to the letter, so.
Well, um, there certainly will be another opportunity for public comment as the staff, um, if this motion passes uh as the staff goes through and gets more detail about how it, uh it influence, but I think it is time for a vote. Any further discussion? Uh, can I substitute the roll call? Any objection? All right, motion passes.
And so, one other, um, one other piece on this, um, on this agenda item um was um a, i- in the global recommendations section, I was chatting with one of the board members earlier. Um, in the global recommendations section, there is a recommendation for the board to establish a policy that um weekend meetings, except where, uh, where necessary, not be scheduled. There are some committees that um, that have one-day meetings that are regularly scheduled on Saturdays, and the agenda item um goes into uh some description about um the impact of having those, those Saturday meetings. Um, and so, uh, because it had been, had been raised in a, in a discussion earlier, I wanted to, to draw the, the attention of the, of the board to, to that recommendation as well.
Alan?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about that, Donna. This would be a global um, uh, recommendation for all the sub-entities, not, is that all the sub-entities under the appendix I review? Or all sub-entities that we're dealing with?
So I, I think the committees that, um, the committees that have Saturday meetings um where, where there might be, need to be exceptions drawn, um, would be one committee that's under appendix I and one that's not, um, which is um the Jenny Commission, which meets, which has two-day meetings. Um, uh, they meet on Fridays and Saturdays, and um, I, and I would think that that would be something that, that we would want to have an exception for, um, and then the Committee of Bar Examiners, um, they uh periodically will have a Saturday meeting. They've actually um restructured their meeting schedule, so mostly they're Fridays, but every once in a while, they'll have Saturday. But every once in a while, they'll have Saturday meetings for calibration sessions for the grading of the exams, as well as the selection of the bar exam questions. So we'd want to leave the ability for them on an as-needed basis to have those, those meetings as well. For others, I don't think we can identify a reason why they would need to have a Saturday meeting.
So would it be better if I were to propose a motion to say that all sub-entities, except Jenny and Committee of Bar Examiners, would not hold Saturday meetings unless necessary, or something like that? Or do you want to just say unless necessary? I don't know what the better language would be. So let me do this, let me propose, let me propose a motion that the board establish a policy that weekend meetings, except where absolutely necessary, will not be scheduled, except for the Jenny Commission and the Committee of Bar Examiners.
Can I offer, I don't, I don't think that we need to identify the committees, because I think they'll fall within what it looks like.
Within the absolute necessary. All right, then I will accept the friendly amendment and, and take out the reference to the two specific committees. Just leave it as, essentially as it is on page six.
I think I captured the idea but not the language. I don't know if you can see that, okay?
Absolutely, that's good, period.
So let me, let me reread it. The board establishes a policy, resolved, the board establishes a policy that weekend meetings of sub-entities will not be scheduled except where absolutely necessary, period.
Establishes a policy that, I'm sorry, my typing is not so great today.
That absolutely necessary will not be scheduled.
That weekend meetings will not be scheduled, except where absolutely necessary, period.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Sonia? Someone late? Can I substitute a roll call? Any objection?
I'm sorry. I, I don't know if this was agendized for changing, I guess, of the global policies, and so I guess that was my only concern. It looks like the only action item is related to LAP, and, I mean, some entities may wish to give us their feedback on whether or not those Saturday meetings are necessary and might shape those global recommendations. So I don't know if, if we should, you know, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, but maybe we should put it off to the next meeting, so those entities could, could be heard.
I think the reason, I think the reason we'd like, I'm sorry, go ahead. Pardon?
He couldn't hear. You just can't hear.
I, I was just wondering if we should trail this recommendation, because it wasn't agendized specifically to change these global recommendations. Perhaps some of the sub-entities may want to be heard as to why they require Saturday meetings. I understand there's kind of a good cause exception built into this, but there might be issues that we're, we're not aware of.
I think if we adopted this, it would be between the staff and the, and the committee, essentially. But the idea is to stop the meetings that are not, don't have to be scheduled on Saturday in order to save the expense of rubbing up the overtime for the staff and so forth and so on.
And although there wasn't a resolution set forth in the item, this issue was specifically pulled, addressed in the agenda item itself, where it was, the sort of conclusion was the board should establish a policy that weekend meetings, except where absolutely necessary, will not be scheduled. So, so we're just sort of doing that via the resolution.
All right. Can I substitute a roll call? We do have a motion pending. All right, any objection? All right, motion passes. Let's break for lunch, we're going to have a working lunch. So let's take about ten minutes to grab the food. Preliminary budget. We're going to seven oh five. Preliminary budget, 2019, and then the five-year forecast. So John is taking that.
Yes, sir. Is this on? You can hear me? Is it on? Hello, hello?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Hello?
Well, at least I won't run out.
Testing point two?
Hello, hello? Works, works now. You ready? All right. So, good afternoon, everyone. I get the pleasure of going last, but on a very important topic, which is our 2019 preliminary budget and our five-year forecast. Just, let me see. All right, here we go. All right, technical issues. So just quickly, I'm going to provide a part of the presentation. I'm going to provide a general budget overview. We'll look back at 2018, just to give you a quick update on where we are projecting 2018 to end as, as the bar as a whole. And then I'm going to jump into the preliminary 2019 budget, focus really on the bar wide. Sounds good. All right, so I'm going to focus on the bar-wide budget and then also dive into the general fund. As you know, that's one of the areas of concern and has been and going forward. So, and then I get the pleasure of presenting the five-year forecast to the board as a whole, and then we can have questions and I'm open, or, and discussion. So just quickly, once this preliminary budget is adopted, it will be submitted to the legislature that we are hoping will be presented no later than next Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Just as, as we have made reforms within the state bar, resources are, as, resources are allocated really to the core mission of the bar and to implement the strategic plan. And when I say about reforms, about the elimination of sections and the creation of CLA. So really focusing on the core mission of the bar. With that said, the budget is prepared within compliance of the board policies, specifically the finance policies. And here are the, here are the challenges. One, mandatory fee increases that support the general fund and the core mission have not increased for almost two decades. The general fund has, is projected to have a deficit in 2019. This would be the third year that the general fund has had a deficit. And then the one area I'll briefly talk about is admissions fund, which is, is to be self-supported, actually falling under the reserve target based on a deficit projected for 2019. And then I will be able to show you the, the five-year forecast starting in 2020. So just a quick look back at 2018. The, the budget was adopted with 153.6 million in revenues with expenses of almost 180 million. The deficit at that point was 25.8. And yesterday, I talked a little about sometimes the deficit or the use of reserves is appropriate when we're talking about the spend-down of something like the bank settlement funds. The deficit for the general fund, though, was eight, 8.9 million.
John, can you speak up a little bit?
Okay.
I'm having trouble hearing you. Thanks.
I apologize. Okay. Where was I? Just, just quickly on projections of the deficit. So overall, there's actually an improvement, and we're projecting by the end of the year that the deficit will only be 23. And specifically for the general fund, which I think is really the large focus, is the budget deficit was 8.9. Projections were just under a $5 million deficit. Revenues for the general fund are trending higher. And just quickly, admissions is seeing a decline in revenues for this year, and we anticipate that continuing going forward, just over a million dollars. And so here's just quickly the summary. This is outlined in the, in the report. You can see that both the revenues and expenditures for general fund are having positive variances. And then you see the admissions, which has $1 million less in revenue projected by year-end. And that's really, you know, when you look at it overall, that's really the two highlights I would point out. Client Security Fund did have increases in expenses. And IT Special Assessment Fund is actually, we're spending money on that and, and will go to zero this next year. So quickly, for 2019, these are the funds I'll be talking about. Really, the one that's missing, I just mentioned it, was the IT Special Assessment Fund, which does not have any, which does not have any more reserves, and, and the spend-down has been complete. All right, so the, the staff report also has attached the preliminary budget. And just quickly, the preliminary budget is broken off into several sections. And one, page one, really provides the overview of the total budget. Office summaries, which gives you based on each office, provides you the total budget for 2019, also shows you the total full-time equivalents as well. The office roll-up has the detail, uses and sources. And then if you dive down in the cost centers, gives you a little more detail. The, really, the large difference is, is when you look at an example of state bar court, you have one office, but you actually have eight cost centers. So there's some really good detail in those schedules. And then we provide the projected reserve balance by fund, and that actually shows you what we're projecting for 2018 and also 2019. And then fund condition statements, I just want to mention. When you look at those, those really are showing you the change in net positions based on revenues and expenditures, which is really different. Net position is different than reserves. And then finally, part that's sort of new for the preliminary budget is the five-year forecast, and that's actually on the last page of the document. So here's the summary. Revenue budget is 168 million, and this is in comparison of 153 from the prior year. Expenses are projected at 194 million point five, and that's in comparison of 179 in the prior year. Now, really, the largest single increase in both of these areas are related to IOTA accounts and trust fund accounts as far as interest earnings. So as revenues have increased in their grants, or grants have increased as well. Positions, there's actually a proposed reduction of five positions in this budget. So the state bar would have a total of 582. And just focusing on OCTC, there's actually a net increase of two positions. Overall, the budget proposes a reserve, use of reserves at 25 million. I mentioned the general fund has a deficit, that is 15.3. Admissions currently is projected at 1.4. Because that brings it under the target reserve of 17%. Staff will be working to reduce that deficit and ensure that's above the reserve requirement. And then another example of a deficit is the bank settlement fund, which actually is spending almost $10 million. So this is a planned spend-down, which is appropriate in this case. So fund-by-fund comparisons, just quickly, I showed revenues and expenses for the general fund with the deficit of 15.3 million. Admissions is the other one at 1.4 million as far as a deficit. I think that's, overall, you can see the decrease or the deficit. All right, so just comparing revenues within the bar-wide revenues. Starting off, mandatory fees, we do see an increase of about $1 million mandatory fees across the board. Voluntary fees and donations are actually projected to have a slight decline. Exam fees, which is really from admissions, I mentioned that 1 million, a low-over-a-million-dollar reduction in revenues. And then grants, and then other, other revenues are from IOTA accounts and trust accounts. So bar-wide expenses, I mentioned earlier, almost 195 million. Here's the breakout, our single largest expense is salary and benefits, which is only increasing by 2.1%. That is attributed to several factors, including increased costs and pensions. Buildings, slight increase for buildings. Services actually only 0.9. There's really two things that are making that increase. One is the statutorily required state audit, and then allocation for items in the strategic plan of about 360,000. Grant, grants are increasing, and that goes back to the trust funds and the IOTA revenues that are going to be increasing. Supplies and equipment actually had a decline. That is really from implementation of certain IT projects, specifically AIMS and CMS. Other expenses also had a decline. That's mainly from transfers, transfers out. Debt services relatively flat, and capital, which we'll discuss, and I'll provide you a listing of that in a few, has increased 4.5%, or 4.5 million. So I showed this pie graph yesterday, just shows you the activities or the offices. Single, single largest expenditure is in access and inclusion, which are the grants, at $66 million, 34% of the overall state bar budget. The largest office, chief trial counsel, is at 19% at 37 million. Next slide is really the full-time equivalents or the positions for the state bar. And I'm, I'm showing you a comparison of 2018 to 2019. Overall change is five positions is noted. Really, the two, the two places I would highlight is just admissions had a decrease of four positions, mainly to try to reduce the deficit. So we reduced four positions in admissions and legal spec. And then there's a couple reductions in state bar court, and then the increase in OCTC. And those are really the highlights. You can see there's variances pretty much across the board. The one that also just to highlight is the executive director's office was a decline. And this is really related to, I believe, the sections, positions, which we're renting out and won't be part of the 2019 budget going forward. So I mentioned strategic plan and allocating revenues for that. Here are five items I outlined in the report for a total of $520,000. And so these are mainly included in services for 2019. Next, capital costs in 2019. This is the listing of capital expenses, as I mentioned earlier. This is an increase of over four, almost 4.5 million dollars. The largest single item is the warmshell and tenant improvements for floor three, which is, which would be planned in 2019, should the board want to proceed with that. All right, so the, the next table I'm showing is really the projected ending reserves for 2019. And really just want to highlight the top two. General fund, based on the current preliminary budget, with expenses of just over $100 million, would take the reserves down to 6.6%. This is certainly under the board 17% target, and is actually under the 10%. Admissions also is projected to be under the reserve target of 17% at 14. There is an operating deficit currently at 1.4. Staff will spend really the next two months prior to the final budget being brought back to the board in January to really try to reduce that deficit and come up with strategies to try to balance that budget and ensure that, at the end of the day, that the reserves are above the bar target. So quickly on the general fund, for 2019, revenues are projected at 76.5 million versus, I'm sorry, 76.5 million versus 76.4. Really, revenues overall for the general fund are flat. Even though mandatory fees, we're anticipating an increase a little over 1%, other revenues declined just under $1 million. Other revenues declined just under a million dollars. Now, it's just not one item that had that impact on other revenues, there's several. One is increased rental income from the rental of floor one and 11, starting in this next year. An increase in interest income of 0.9 million. And then transfers went down to 2.2 million. And then chargebacks for the CLA staff aren't going to be there as well. So overall, a decline of 0.8 million, but several adjustments, several major changes within that category. So 2019 expenses are pegged at 191.8 versus 85.3 in 2018. Personnel expenses are increasing 2.8%. As I mentioned, capital is up 4.5, and services increased at 1.9. And a few different items for the general fund, services increase. I mentioned the audit, I mentioned the strategic plan initiatives. And then some technology projects related to security and continuing CMS. And then just to sort of highlight the general fund deficit, 15.3 million, as I mentioned, is the third year in a row that we're going to have a deficit at least proposed. The budget last year again was 8.9. And then in 2017, the actual deficit was 9.5. This is just the summary per category. I won't go into, as I, I think I've covered most of it, show you the ending balance of 6.1 million at the bottom. So just talking about the reserve policy, I did provide two slides yesterday. This is mainly those, just on one slide. Talks about how we calculate it, what are the appropriate uses for reserves, and what the target is. And then noted at the bottom is when reserves are going to be under 10% that the board needs to approve that. And anticipation of a few questions I think I'll receive related to the reserves and the calculation for the general fund. And this is not in the report necessarily, I talk about it in the narrative. But I think it's important because I'm sure a question will come up of, if we eliminate the third floor, how does that impact reserves? And then if we do no capital, meaning that we do not do normal maintenance that we would normally be doing, what would that have an impact on? So without the third floor, expenses would decline to 88 million, leaving us a reserve of 9.8 million, and we would be about 11%. If you eliminate capital completely, you would have an ending reserve of 14.5. And you would just be above the reserve target of 17%. So with that, I'm going to briefly go into the forecast. So back in, I believe it was May or June, Kevin Harper with some finance staff and others started working on the five-year forecast. Really focusing at just the general fund. And, you know, the, the time of looking back and seeing past expenditures and revenues, and really trying to project going forward. The five-year capital plan was included in the forecast. Really trying to also map out technology investments and initiatives over the next five years. And as you can imagine, sort of projecting some of those costs are very difficult. So here are the highlights. We just kept mandatory fee revenue pegging at 1.4%. Certainly, we didn't have as much time as we'd like to do related to the analysis. And I shouldn't say it in a negative, it's just, there's a lot of ways you could have gone about this and to get a finer number on the mandatory fees for each year based on demographics of the licensees. This does anticipate full lacing of the third floor at the building. Implementation of the work study, workload study that was done on OCTC in the courts, which would add actually 58 positions. I pegged the number at about 7.8 million in our salary calculations. 2020 anticipates a 3.5% adjustment for our SEIU-covered employees. It also implements parity related to retiree health benefits for all employees. And that cost in 2020 would be 3.2 million. As far as I, I mentioned OCTC increases, there are no other staff increases anticipated in the five-year forecast, simply the increase based on the workload study. And then in 2020, it does anticipate technology investments of 5.2 million. I believe about 3.5 million is actually for new computers and hardware and stuff like that. So really, capital investments related to our technology. And then in that 2020, just normal capital expenses related to our five-year plan at 6.7. So overall, and I, and I really wanted to highlight those few items because that's really what changes the forecast in 2020. Overall, if you anticipate a $15.3 million deficit for this year, based on those additional items, the deficit would go up to about 31.9 million, which is almost doubling, it's actually, it's, it's doubling our current deficit at 16.6 million. Certainly, you see personnel is the largest increase at 16.2 million. I think I highlighted that related to the personnel, the cost of living adjustments for the employees, and the HOPE, OPEB, and retiree health stuff. The next slide. So based on the calculations on the forecast, if you anticipate those costs, meaning want to implement the workload study, want to, or provide parity with retiree health for all employees, and do the other adjustments, you would ultimately have to increase the mandatory fee about $100, which is a little, about a 30% increase. And as I will show you in a few minutes, the five-year forecast from that point could be supported by simply an annual CPI to the mandatory licensing fee. And I think when we think back about the fees haven't been changed for 20 years, if a simple CPI had been applied, I don't, we would not, we certainly would not have the deficits that we have today. I did mention the capital plan and IT investments. We did, in that calculation of $100, back out, large capital expenses related to our capital plan and technology. The thought process would be, a special assessment could be established potentially for those items. The one-time fee would be $210. Or if you, if you had it annualized, it'd be $42 a year for five years. And I mentioned potential reserve assessment. Depending on where the bar's reserves are, you'd also want to try to build those reserves back. The, the really train of thought is, is hopefully you would have budget savings, and those reserves would be able to back up to that 17% at some point. And the five-year, I'm sorry, the five-year forecast. This five-year forecast is actually the last page on the budget document. I did add two, two lines, which is just the change from prior year and the percentage change from prior year. So after you get over the large increase in 2020, and again, based on some significant items, the increase in revenues really is 1 to 1.5%. Where expenditures really fluctuate a little from equipment, which is capital, IT and, and building, really fluctuates between 2 and 3% in years two, three, and four. But then there's a large expenditure related to capital in year five, and that's why there's the increase of 15%. But overall, if you look at the five-year forecast, at least in the first three, four years, the deficit would be 32 million to about $33 million. And with that, I'm certainly open for questions. This is the preliminary budget resolution for the board to consider.
Yeah, Josh Bertulla. First, I apologize, I am going to be leaving in a moment for the rest of the meeting. But I had two quick questions, or one statement and one question. Clearly concerned about the deficit spending and the size of it and the position that we're in. Understand that the need and desire for fee increase, I'm just wondering if you've looked at any other options for conserving cash? Did you look at the ability to finance the landlord improvements here at the building?
We, we have not. We have not done that yet. Certainly, it's something we could do for, for the board.
We have, currently have outstanding loans on our LA building. And we also financed the tenant improvements that were done on the first floor and the 11th floor of this building. And we're still paying, making debt service payments on those loans. The loans do require that we set aside a debt service reserve fund. So we, it doesn't actually preserve our cash and, and it doesn't sort of achieve the result of preserving our cash quite as much as we might like it to. So that's one of the challenges with debt financing, in addition to the additional costs that we've ran into in the past.
Was that Renee? And then Sonia?
I guess do you just want specific questions now, or do you want kind of broad?
However you want to do it.
Okay, sorry, I feel like I'm...
A little echoey.
Can you fix that? Kind of painful. So, um, so I'll just, hang on a second. You know, I'll, I'll turn off the microphone.
So, you know, I think everybody, probably, you know, we've talked before about the... I think they're all, you know, the question is, do we march blindly and assume that we will have a decrease? Or do we act under the... My own feeling is that we have to act as a board. And that we have had items of, that any time we try to act... What you'll do, we still will get the others, so we will correctly anticipate. And so we have to have a plan for how to deal with this. And as a plan, that it would be irresponsible of us as a board to... And, um, the purpose of reserves is for an unplanned emergency, it's not to get you through a planned problem. Once in a while, you can do that, but it's not for an unplanned emergency. And once you lose those reserves, I don't know what the projection is, but I, what I just say would take a very long time to rebuild those.
Okay, sorry, I had to turn, that's still kind of off there. So I don't really see that as an option. So I, I think that we could build a plan. I would certainly have a conversation with the legislature about it and let them know what, what's required. They're not going to be able to make any commitments to us. But, you know, as I look at the numbers, I'm just, I mean, I'm just kind of doing back of the envelope. I would also say, I think there's at least another million dollars of risk in here because we're planning on this ongoing increase in the fees going up. The fee revenue, 1.4% per year. We haven't done the demographic study. I don't know that that is a good assumption, we're not. If it's not, there's another million of risk in there. So I, I don't see any way that we completely get out of all deficit spending. But I certainly would not advocate for $15 million. If I had to make a decision today, I would complete the IT projects that are in place because I think it would be kind of imprudent to stop them. And I think they affect our work, and we have to focus on fulfilling our, we still have to fulfill our mission to the best of our ability. I would not do any other CapEx at the moment, as painful as that may be. And I understand we'd rather have the revenue for the building. I understand that we need to have safe buildings. But I would do it down to the bare minimum, you know, what is a crisis today, and that's it. I would, so I would take all that out. I wouldn't fill any open positions. And I would, you know, and any, if anybody leaves, that's it, we don't fill the spots. I understand that that is a horrible outcome. And, you know, our backlog will go through the roof. But we can only operate within the resources that we have. And to operate as though we will have more, more resources, I think would be wholly, again, in my view, irresponsible and imprudent. And we, as, as a board, we have a responsibility to operate prudently, as prudently as possible, and fulfill our missions to the best of our ability. So that's my speech.
Sonia?
I have two. One is the back pay for the judges, are those included in here already? It is?
No, no, it is not.
We haven't calculated that yet, the back pay that's going to be owed.
Shouldn't that...
Right, wait, hold on, this was discussed in closed session. So let's reserve that for another closed session. Go ahead.
Also, have, just wanted to find out, just coming from a leasing background, and if we consider for those, the CapEx for, you know, considering lease versus buy to reduce the expenses? That's another way of bringing down expenses in leasing some equipment or, or even in infrastructure?
Yeah, so... Steve is here, I think there are slightly different issues. But I don't know, Steve, if you want to come up. I know we do lease a great deal of equipment. The specific investment we're talking about are the tenant improvements to bring the floor up to rental quality, so...
Sonia, are you talking about a lease-buyback on the building, something like that, or something different?
You know, either, even in software, or even in any infrastructures of lease, leasehold improvement, that they can, you know, you can try to do some leasing product, products that would bring down your monthly, you know, monthly rent. Because then you do have, you know, when you do an analysis of lease versus buy, so that that will lower your expenses. And at the end of a, three years, you will own, you will own the assets. So something that probably I can talk to you in, you know, just, just to look at the products.
Well, in terms of the capital improvements that we're talking about, it's not just specific individual discrete pieces of equipment. It's integrated system, HVAC, fire, life, safety, so...
In terms of the capital improvements, it's not like an individual, particular discrete piece of equipment that we're, we'd be buying or leasing. It's integrated systems throughout the entire HVAC system, fire, life, safety, all of that stuff. So it's not, it's not quite the same thing, it's just sort of one discrete thing that we could potentially have some kind of a lease versus buy scenario.
Understand. But, you know, okay, we can talk about it, you know, just, just socialize it. Thank you.
Joanna?
I agree with Renee, and I think it would be helpful for the legislature to know how this is, how this will affect us in reality, especially going forward without a fee increase, having that plan in place. So they know exactly where we're going to have to take things away from and how it's going to impact us.
I'll share is that the five-year forecast serves a couple of different purposes. First of all, we had a board book requirement, I believe, in place that we would submit a budget and then budgets for the prospective two years. So essentially, when I arrived at the bar, we were providing three years' worth of budgets every year. But it turns out that when you looked into what would, what was included in those prospective year budgets, there was simply a straight-line adjustment of current year projected out for two years. There was not an informed projection of future years. So when Kevin joined us, one of the things that he and I really talked about is the need to create a meaningful multi- to create a meaningful multi-year budget that reflected the strategic plan. So the five-year projection is really certainly our first effort, I think, in a long time as an organization to have a meaningful multi-year projection. But also, as you know, for 2019, we were seeking initially a fee increase and we needed to be able to articulate exactly what our needs are as an organization. So the five-year projection also serves that purpose. You're also aware that we, very early on in the process, were told that 2019 is not the year to be seeking a fee increase, but instead we would need to look to 2020. And to that end, the legislature included language in our 2019 fee bill that prescribes a very comprehensive audit by the state auditor of our funding needs and a review by the LAO as well. And so both of those are underway and the five-year projection is the articulation of our need that is very relevant and directly on point to that analysis. And so in the, the projection is much more than a flat document and many of you have seen, it's a multi-tab workbook with a great deal of delineation for every single expenditure, the justification materials, supporting documents, et cetera. And so in terms of this issue of what will the consequence be of not getting our funding, it really is now at, at a place where we can view this as kind of a menu of need and if we don't get the additional funding, these are the things that we can't do. The piece that, that we haven't done, and Renee brought this up yesterday, and I think the board determined that in January, we will have a segment of the planning discussion focused on this issue is not only what will the incremental additions of a fee increase be used for, but also if we get no fee increase at all, what will we have to do as an organization to right-size? And we have not yet done that. I don't personally believe that we should wait to do that before committing to some of these investments that are absolutely critical to our achieving our mission. But that is, of course, the, the choice for the board. And as you indicate, we are not going to get clear direction from the legislature in response to anything that we do in January or February. They are waiting for the results of those audits and reviews, which will come in May and July respectively, and then it will wind its way through the legislative process. So, you know, those are sort of all of the issues, the impetus behind the five-year forecast, how it's currently being reviewed and used, and then what I think the board will, will do at the January planning session and how that does or does not inform your decisions today about what to approve in terms of the 2019 budget.
And maybe an element that is, hasn't been addressed yet in discussion is the, this is a preliminary budget that's being submitted to the legislature, but there'll be another opportunity for us to essentially finalize that budget. So there is going to be runway to make changes as necessary.
Right. The final budget is due in February or has it been changed to March for 2019? I can't recall that change goes into effect for 2019 or 2020.
I think the change is in effect already, it's, it's the November thing that didn't get changed.
So it's, it's going to be due in March 2019.
So, I mean, is it fair to say that we have been asked to describe for the legislature what a fee increase would look like? And this is our, this is our attempt at doing so, the 2019 budget and then lock in step with that is the five-year forecast.
Right, well, I think, and I don't have it in front of me, but the language that defines the scope of the state auditor's review is directly on point to your question. It speaks to the auditor coming in and taking, reviewing our identified need for a fee increase. Again, I don't have it in front of me, but that is precisely what, what we've done to be responsive is we've created a very clear document that outlines what we see as our funding need and that is the five-year projection. So it is very much tied to what the auditor will be reviewing at the request of the legislature.
Go ahead, Renee.
So I don't really, I mean, I think these are two separate things, right? Because one is how much do you need going forward? When, when and if they do vote on a fee increase, the other question is what do we do until then? And obviously, we can say this is how much of a fee increase we need and if we get less, then you don't execute that plan. I, I think that's a separate question from what you do between now and when you know what that fee increase is. So a lot of these costs maybe roll forward and you say, you know, then in 2020 or when we get the fee increase, then we have these CapEx needs and we're not going, but we're not going to spend that until then and we are going to be woefully understaffed until such time as we get a fee increase. But it's almost like we're kind of spending now as though we had the fee increase, which doesn't make sense to me. So I think we have to separate those two things and look at what do we do in 2019 with what we've got and where we'll end up and what do we do in 2020? If they come back and say, oh my God, you know, this is awful, then, you know, we prom, and they have some other solution, but I, I don't want to look like I'm, you know, just sort of counting on that and, you know, end up, I mean, we'll look, we'll look ridiculous if we just spend all this money and then don't get, they're going to have a fee increase and then, you know, we're all saying like, what did we do? That's a disaster.
So do I understand, we are required to submit a preliminary budget to the legislature this month? So we have to today send something. So we don't really have time to be tweaking today's preliminary budget, but we are going to address some of these issues in January. It's part of the planning meeting, is that?
Right. Which was, you and I were thinking the same thing in that we'll have, we'll have additional time in January to work through and finalize the 2019 budget. So we, so we will not, I think, we'll get another opportunity to address, I think Renee's very valid points about spending.
I don't understand the point of that, but I would need to submit something that shows completely irresponsible spending.
It's a timing issue, I think. I, I agree, it's not ideal, but it's, I don't know that there's time between now and when this is due.
Of course there is, it's not that hard. You're going to take out CapEx, you're going to cut back on your personnel budgets, you're going to have to, you know, I don't, you know, you're not going to fill positions and it's not, you know, it's not like this is a three-month project, do I understand it's not, you know, something you do overnight. But I think the whole point is to say to the legislature, you know, we are, this is, we're not able to operate as it is today, we don't have money and nor will we until such time as you execute a fee increase. I think you give them a budget now and then say in February, just kidding, we just took $8 million out of it because, you know, we realized we didn't have the money. We know we don't have the money.
So you're proposing making a resolution that would approve the preliminary budget with certain changes that you're suggesting?
I would, I don't know, I haven't really thought through the logistics of, I don't know the exact dates that you have to turn it in.
It was due yesterday, but after a conversation with Jason and consultation with our lobbyist, we determined that we could push it off for a week so that we'd give the board time to approve.
It was critical that we all saw it rather than just meet a deadline so that if we wanted to make changes to it, for instance, adopt some of what Renee is suggesting, that we have time to do so before the legislature saw something.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Does the, does the 2019 revenue figure represent, assume an increase in the, in the mandatory fee itself? I see a 1.4% or 1.3% increase in the amount of fees, but we're not assuming that the legislature is going to approve some special.
No anticipation, because that fee bill has already been passed.
We've assumed each year that there's more people.
It's not accurate that there's no basis, we reviewed a 15-year trend, that's how we came up with 1.4%.
What I studied for was that, I knew it was a trend, but the demographics are going to, like, at some point, they're catching up. We haven't really done that, so I'm just pointing out that there's additional risk in there that, that that increase may not materialize. Because based on a trend, not, you know, not sort of.
Right, so there is, there's a, if I'm capturing, there's a $1 million risk in that forecast if the demographics don't play out.
Or if the trend doesn't continue or the demographics catch up, it could be nothing.
So Alan and then Sean.
I think Renee makes a couple of very good, or provides a couple of very good reasons for trimming back the 2019 budget in the way that she described. But I also think that in doing so, you run a risk of fatally, if not fatally, at least significantly wounding the organization. If you engage in personnel reductions, you can lose additional people that you don't want to leave, you don't want to lose. If you don't proceed with getting the floor built out, you could lose the opportunity of a good market. So it's not to say that those considerations necessarily overcome what Renee is suggesting, but I think they have to be taken into consideration. And if we have some reasonable belief that we will get a fee increase, then I would be at least willing to consider both avenues. The dramatic cut in the 2019 budget for the reason that Renee has said, but I would also consider the opposite and take into consideration what I considered, what I would predict to be a potentially significant weakening of the organization if we think we're going to get the fee increase in 2020. And again, nothing is for sure and I, I grant you that, but this would bring into someplace some taking temperature of the legislature as far as we can and getting advice from people in Sacramento and so forth and so on. So I think it's, that's, that's the other side of the coin that I would want to consider.
Sean?
Well, Renee's, Renee's raised some really important points, needless to say. I think on the anticipated increase in licensing fees year over year going forward, the fact that the admissions revenue is down actually is a red flag in that respect because that's, it would be the new admitees who are supplying the additional revenue. But in the big scheme of things, I think that's relatively minor point. I think the big points that Renee has raised are the $4 million investment in capital to make the third floor rentable. My understanding is we have our tenant on one is ready to sign a commitment to that, which was important to my discussions with Leah about this before the meeting. And so although I have great concern about the deficit spending, I think we're in a position to lock in that contract and that's a, would be a good use of our capital resources long-term. And even if we don't get a fee increase next year, we still want, will have wanted to make that, monetize that space and bring that money in. So ordinarily, I would prefer to defer something like that, but I think, I want to add that information to the mix for the board because we may want to consider doing that. In terms of having a hiring freeze or attempting to defer some of the other capital expenses, I don't know exactly what is in the rest of the capital expense budget for next year and how urgent it's, probably partially the elevators that we've already partially committed to for this building. But what we might do, I just throw this out, is as a sort of compromise between Jason and Renee is, first, we can decide whether we want to proceed with the third floor renovation or not for the reasons I've just mentioned. I think that presents some special issues of timing. And then on the other issues, perhaps we could put something in this budget that, that the board is very concerned about the level of the deficit spending and the decrease in reserves that is forecast for the end of the year. If we get a fee increase, this will be resolved. If not, the board is going to have to make adjustments and we're going to continue to think about whether we have to impose something like an austerity plan that the board believes will be damaging to the long-term interests of the organization out of concern of the deficit. But this is, this would be our plan for operating the bar in a relatively healthy fashion in 2019 and we are considering whether to take drastic measures to reduce expenses in a way that we don't think is a good idea for the organization. And to me, that's a more viable way of saying, dealing with Renee's concern, which I think is well-taken, to put a budget in front of the legislature and then suddenly say, oops, we're taking out $8 million later. And it would give some more time to the staff to itemize the, the other capital expenditures that are at issue and whether we want to have them defer even until next summer if possible, et cetera. So that's it.
Renee?
I just want to clarify something Alan said, talking about making drastic cuts. So what I was suggesting was that in the immediate 2019, I wasn't saying that we would go through and like slash, I was saying we would hold, we wouldn't fill positions, we would defer spending to really bring the cash deficit down. So I wasn't suggesting drastic cuts. I do agree that the, the building, the building one is a tough one because you'd like to get it leased and it is a strong market. I think the, the payback doesn't, would start like late 2019 or something?
Payback, you mean as far as?
Sorry, we'd start getting rent.
2020, January 2020.
So the problem is, it's kind of a long thing, right? And, you know, things happen to leases in between and so it, it does concern me, but I also just, I can't get past that $5 million price tag. If we could finance it, great, but if you just have to put the cash aside, you know, I don't, you know. And again, I think once you lose reserves, I don't really see how we're, I look at those numbers that we need for, from the fee increase as well as the incremental amount to rebuild reserves, like that's sort of hard to imagine getting. So we're, you know, we'll just, we'll kind of have no reserves. So, you know, I don't know, maybe, you know, maybe we do put that cash aside and assume that, you know, as the rent pays back, we, we move that, we move it back, I don't know, but I, I just, that, that gives me heartburn. So you could present, you know, two versions to say this was, you know, the original, the original version of the budget, you know, under the circumstances, the board was reluctant to approve this amount of deficit spending. And the, these are the two versions of the budget that we're going to be voting on, just, you know, to let you know and I, and take all that stuff out. But I, I certainly, I think we have to do something that recognizes that we don't have the money.
Right. Mark?
Yeah, I like that idea.
I like the comments over here, too. Do you expect a reaction from the legislature in any respect, once they receive this? Because you sort of have, if you take Renee, Renee's suggestion, you sort of have the reality gloom and doom budget on the one hand and then you have the hopeful budget on the other hand. So I kind of like the idea of the hybrid presentation, but would you expect the legislature to say, oh goodness? You know, I, I don't, I just don't know, are they going to read it or are they going to do anything about it or just not even think about it?
I think it's tough to say, what, what I would say is over the last two years, we've been heavily criticized. we've been heavily criticized for not maximizing the value of our building, the fact that we own this building and we've had vacant floors. That's been the subject of a lot of attention and scrutiny. And in fact, that's one of the specific issues that the auditor will be reviewing. So we've been subject to criticism for maintaining vacant floor space. We've also been subject to an extreme amount of criticism for the functioning of our Office of the Chief Trial Counsel. So I bring those two issues up because they're examples of one where either way you go, you can be subject to criticism. If the board decides to make the investment so that we can lease out the third floor, the criticism could be, why are you spending, making a discretionary choice to spend money to lease a floor? You don't have to do that, right? But if the board decides not to, the other criticism, which we've, again, experienced for the last two years, is you're not maximizing the value of the building that you own. That shows that you are not financially responsible. And some of you have been more involved in that discussion with others, but that's been quite intense criticism at times. And in fact, again, that's something specifically that the auditor is looking at with OCTC. What concerns me when I hear about a hiring freeze is most of our positions, not most, but about 250 of 580 are in the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel. So we talk about hiring freezes, we're talking about impacting that area of the bar that is most scrutinized. And so when we are criticized and when we are labeled as an agency that doesn't operate well, it's often with respect to the functioning of that office. And then we are going to impose a hiring freeze that is only going to negatively impact that office. So I think either way you go, there's going to be a reaction, and that's why it really is a policy call for the board. But what I would say is, in terms of conveying, many of us have been, several of us have been in these conversations for the last couple of years. There's been a lot of attempts to convey, and what it's resulted in is the fee bill language where we're going to have the audit and the LAO review. I don't anticipate, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jason or Dag, you know, been in the room with me, but I don't anticipate that we're going to get much more feedback beyond you're having an audit and you're having the LAO review, and based on that, we're going to see what we're going to do.
So I was unaware of the criticism on the not using the building space. In light of that information, I think it is, I think it's almost like not even acknowledging the import and the effect of having the auditors here and having them report on that aspect of our operations to simply ignore, ignore that. I think that that's a signal from the legislature that we need to put this used to productive, this space to productive use, and a necessary part of that is the improvements.
I will go back to my first comment, which was, we have a responsibility to do what's prudent and in the best interest of the bar. We may disagree on what that is. Every time we try to anticipate, every time we try to do things based on what the legislature will say, it almost never works out, right? So again, I totally get that, you know, they want us to use the building. I want us to use the building. It makes me feel bad that we have floors that aren't rented out, but we don't have $5 million, right? So, you know, if it's five, keep, you know, $5 million, you know, and just, you know, or throw caution to the wind and have no reserves, when we're not promised, when we, you know, can't be certain of a fee increase, we have to make ugly decisions. And yeah, is the, is our performance going to degrade? Yeah, but our option is to just spend money we don't, we don't actually have, other than in reserves. So that's why I would go back to, you know, this is the budget that works with, this is money that we have. It ends up as, you know, a $4 million or $5 million deficit, whatever it is. Still not great. This is what we, you know, what we had originally proposed. This is what our board said we needed to do to get the deficit down. And, you know, we can say we're going to, you know, debate it some more. We can't wait until these audits and stuff are done, because the year will be over. You can't fix it at the end of the year. So I think as long as, you know, if you say in advance, this is the budget we have to adopt, because we don't have funding and we couldn't continue to deficit spend to the tune of $15 million, you know, we know that this is what's going to happen, but we're, you know, this is the money that we have. And let someone come back and say, no, 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 let, you know, you know, what is, someone should have a conversation with the chief justice as well, you know, and she should be aware of the situation as well. But to just kind of, you know, ignore it. So I think we have to carefully craft the message, but we can't try and game the system here.
So this is what I'm seeing. A message when this is submitted that, okay, let me back up. I feel like we need to provide the legislature the information they've asked for, which is the case for the fee increase. Because we've asked for a fee increase a number of years. They've either pushed us off, and now we're in the situation where they predicated a fee increase on the performance, our performance on two audits, which will know the results in March and April. So I agree with Renee in that, you know, that the timing is not, May and July, so it's not ideal at all, because we'll be in 2019 by then. So I feel the budget as crafted, in however we want to frame it, should be provided, because that does show the legislature what is going to be required in terms of a fee increase in order for our agency to sort of keep up with the times.
And what are you calling that? Are you talking about the 2020 or the 2019?
Well, so the 2019 as crafted is the foundation for the rest. So if we make changes to 2019, we're going, we got to push it all the way through. And I believe the legislature needs to see that information as it currently is. But I also think we need to show the legislature that we are, we are very aware of the deficit spending and the precarious situation our agency will be in if we don't get a fee increase. So how is that communicated? Sean has an idea of sort of a cover letter, like saying, this is, this is what you asked for, which is the budget as crafted justifying our fee increase. It has fairly conservative views on the 2019 budget and going forward. However, the board recognizes the following. And if, if we feel in January, we're not going to be able to, we don't believe, or something to do with us not feeling that we can get a fee increase, we're going to do the following. Essentially freeze in place, because we need to. And then we'll finalize the budget based on that. Or Renee's proposal of two documents essentially saying the same thing, right? That's sort of, I feel like that's a good space for us to be. It recognizes, you know, the information the legislature has asked for, but also recognizes our duty as a board. Renee?
I do think you have to show what the 2019, you know, how we would get there. And you could just adjust 2019 and say, you know, if we push these forward, obviously these costs will just go forward. That whole plan. But I think that you do, you know, look at this by taking the following steps and being really clear, like postponing build-out of the building that, you know, assuming we run it. $5 million, but, you know. Holding freezing positions, but will result in. Backlog. That reduces.
Finalizing the budget in a specially convened planning session in January. Leah, how do you feel about the presentation of information that way?
You mean for us to prepare and present two different budgets?
The, reflecting the ideas that Renee has for 2019, not necessarily needing to build out the rest, is that?
No, I don't think you have to, I don't think you have to redo 2020 forward. I think what I, what I would do would show a high-level version for 2019 that takes out these big CapEx numbers and reduces, freezes the payroll. So I don't think that's a huge amount of redoing. And again, in the cover letter, you say, these are the three or four things that we've done. And you'll see the deficit is reduced by X, but those costs would have to roll forward into 2020. They don't go away forever, right? I mean, other than the payroll savings. You're eventually going to do that.
So it's not two different budgets. It's just making the changes for the 20, for the preliminary 2019 budget.
It's two versions of the 2019, but the second version is not.
Right. Either cover letter format indicating what Renee is saying, and then providing the, what I think is the case for the fee increase and what the legislature has asked for. Not changing the projections until the budget is finalized.
I think you guys are saying two different things. I think one approach is a cover letter with the budget that's been presented today. And I think another approach is two different budgets. One, the one we presented today, and the other with the CapEx removed and hiring freezes in it.
Always for 2019.
Right.
And only kind of change at a high level. I don't think it's to go through and like show what all the tabs are going to be, you know, detailed, because you're talking about a couple of key numbers.
Sorry, I just kept echoing. And then you're going to roll back the payroll, so, and then you could show the summary of that.
Right, well, our budget document that's like provided in the agenda item, not the five-year projection, just this simple budget document, is multiple pages. I mean, it's so, in doing this, and if we're talking about assuming only the general fund, but that hits many, many different programs, I guess, I don't, I think we would have to make those changes, and they would impact multiple parts of this budget document. So it's, so it's not just a high-level summary. But that's neither here nor there. I think really this is the policy call for the board on what we're going to present and how.
I think it would be, one way to address it is in the cover, explain those particular programs we are going to be considering cutting. You know, and identifying, you know, the CapEx, you know, the hiring and so forth. Just at a high level in the cover letter and not doing a second document, but letting them know, we are going to be looking at these things in January and possibly making some very important changes to this preliminary budget, because we, we need to have, take a hard look at these things, and we intend to do that in January. I think that's the easiest way to do it.
Can I have, Jason?
So I asked John to put back on the screen his, this chart he did. This is what I have in mind, something like this along with a cover memo or just taking the big bottom-line numbers and saying, these are the big adjustments the board either has decided to make or is considering, plus others, which might be hiring freeze, whatever. I don't think we're in a position personally to make a decision of that magnitude right now. But we, so the budget document, I think the vision is would, the detailed budget would be presented as is with this cover memo saying, the board is concerned about the deficit spending. We're considering these changes in big picture that would be unnecessary if we get a fee increase. And furthermore, if we don't get a fee increase, then the board is going to have to consider much more drastic cuts next fall, right? So we might as well put that out there, because that's the reality we're facing. I mean, we have a short-term problem, and then we have an even more serious long-term problem if we do not get the fee increase.
Debbie?
I like what Sean has said, so sort of, I'm not sure if did I really want to say this, but if we present the budget as is and say, oh, and in January, we're probably going to, we may do something different, what changes between now and then? What, what are we saying? Why we may have to make all these drastic changes in what, a month and a half and six weeks? What is going to change why we do, you know? What changes that we can't do it now?
But I would say.
We'd be getting a list of maybe some of the capital expenses that we will be able to make decisions about, you know, one by one.
Yeah, I think the timing would support that, because the board is just now considering and has raised the following issues that are going to be reflected in the supplemental document, whatever that's going to look like. And we're telling, and we'll have time within the next, you know, month and a half to then be able to make some pretty difficult decisions. I think that, I don't know, what you, what's your sense?
I just, that's what I wanted to know, was because that's what they're going to ask us. Okay, so what's changing? What are, what are you going to know new, but you don't know now in over a six-week period that's over the holidays? What is, what difference is going to happen between now and then that you can't make that decision now? So that's what you're saying, that we will do a finer look or we'll get a list of what those capital improvements are, other than the big CapEx one? But what are those other capital improvements? And is there anything in there that could be deferred where we could sort of save some money on the margins or something?
Got it. So I'm going to go Sonia and then Renee, and then I think there probably is a making of a motion somewhere in this discussion. Go ahead, Sonia.
I think that you, we do have the list of Cap, you know, CapEx, I believe.
Well, these are, these are summarized at a very high level, but certainly those are the three large categories.
Which I think that, which means that we can try to get it now, because we have that. But at the same time, in that, in that general reserve fund that you have there, you can just add the, add the personnel, right? The freezing.
You mean this?
The earlier one, the one that Sean had shown.
Yeah, this, I mean, I think.
Just add that.
Yeah, the point of this one is to show that if, you know, going to the CapEx, if there was no CapEx across the board, which is, you know, low over $8 million, the, the actual deficit would be 6.9, but you would still be above the reserve target. And I think going back to what you communicate the legislature is, is you're not making, you're eliminating CapEx, which is deferring or pushing off these options. But without a fee increase, we, you know, we're still going to have a deficit, and without a fee increase, we would have to pare down the organization significantly. And, you know, related to that, the easiest thing to, you know, at least from the budget document, is to take out CapEx. I get Renee's point of you can go through and put some credits and just anticipate savings based on freezing positions, because we don't know exactly where all those are at. But again, by simply deferring, at least in the preliminary, the CapEx, you get above the reserve. And you can signify to the legislature that we had to defer capital because of these concerns, and it's not something we can continue, and we don't want to pare down the organization at this point, so.
Renee?
I might do this slightly differently. I think showing this by the ending reserve maybe won't quite sink in, because they don't really, you know, without looking at how much our expenditures are and what that means. So if we want to go this route, I would say, you know, preliminary, you know, proposed budget, total expenses, and then instead of ending reserve, I would say deficit. I would focus on the deficit, not on the ending reserve. I mean, you can, if you want to keep that in, that's fine. And then I would perhaps say, board, you know, board proposals under review. And you could show, you know, defer building or floor build-out, 3.7 million. You know, other CapEx is Y, and freezing. You know, other CapEx is Y and freezing positions, you know, is Z, right? However many millions. And I would say if you, if you held your, held your FTS where you are today, assume some, some attrition and build in whatever our, uh, committed increases are, you can figure out what that number is. So you would have three, uh, components that the board is discussing to significantly reduce, reduce the deficit and, and lay those in. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah.
What I wanted to point out, uh, Steve has a detailed list, um, you know, for PowerPoint presentation, I, I really tried to summarize these, but Steve want to go through because I, I think there is a concern by completely not doing any, that some of them aren't necessarily, um, great to defer.
Yeah, I did just want to clarify, there is a very detailed list already, a very detailed and thoughtful list of a multi-year plan for all of these, um, capital improvements. So that for 2019, it's about $4.7 million, taking out the whole third floor issue. Certainly, we can work with CBRE to figure out what could thoughtfully be, um, just deferred to other years. We have done that, that's kind of been the practice for, for many years, uh, prior to this. I don't think zero is necessarily realistic, since we, we do have some things that are in progress and there are, there are dependencies of, of certain things. So it might, it's not necessarily feasible to get it down to zero, but we certainly could work with them to figure out, um, what absolute, what is the absolute minimum that we, we would need to do for 2019 in order to not get ourselves into too much further trouble down the road.
Okay. So with all that, um, can someone put a motion on the, on the floor?
Not good at crafting these, Sean can do it.
Sean? All eyes are on you.
I will, I will attempt to, to do it. So, um, I move that we adopt the proposed budget for transmission to the legislature to be submitted, along with a message that the board is evaluating emergency measures to address the deficit spending that is, uh, ah, to reduce the deficit spending resulting from the current level of available revenue, comma, including the hiring freeze, comma, deferral of capital maintenance that will result in increased costs in future years and possible reduction of OCTC capacity. Well, I'll stop there. The intention, uh, is to give a flavor of what should be transmitted and not word for word, so just to be clear. And I also, in my notes, I put in a message about if we don't have a fee increase next year, then much deeper and more damaging cuts will be necessary in the fall. But I will leave it to leadership whether to put something like that in the memo.
Such as capital maintenance, though, it's capital expenditures. You could say expenditures and maintenance.
Yeah, because these, a lot, some of these are really.
Yeah.
Putting aside how you'd characterize them for task purposes, they're really maintenance issues. They're, we have systems that are worn out, we have, some of them present safety issues, I think, at some point. So it's not like it's a, we're buying new, new fancy finishes for the counters. Let's move along with measures to reduce the deficit. Oh, well, it should, um, yeah, that would be fine to make it less detailed, um, but, uh, although it would, after the word along, Sarah, um, along with a message that the board is considering measures, I would say emergency measures. Yeah, to reduce the deficit spending, period. And then leadership can figure out the full scope of what to say in this. Well, obviously, we'll be more fulsome than a motion can be. And to my thinking, the concept of emergency is important because these are not measures that we think are good for the long-term health of the organization, but are caused by the fact that we simply do not have sufficient funds. That's up to Jason.
All right, I think we have a good motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sean with the motion, Mark with the second. I think we need to do a roll call because some folks have left.
Watson? Dellen?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
LeBron?
Yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Mendoza? Pertula? Selig?
Yes.
Stallings?
Yes.
Steinbrecher?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, that was a very productive discussion. Uh, hang on, let me just make, just check here. Hold everyone a suspense, but, uh, we are adjourned, thank you.
Yay.